I'll rise please. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to recognize two local residents who have passed away, who have powerful connections to the city. One is Cornelius Conny Currier, a former city councillor who passed away within the last month. And Raymond Gallagher, whose name is perhaps not familiar to you, but he's certainly familiar to the superintendent of schools. His father passed away in the last week. And we'd like just a moment of silence to recognize those two individuals before we Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councillor Shand.
Present.
Councillor Tanta.
Present.
Councillor Vogel.
Present.
Councillor Zee.
Present.
Councillor Devlin.
Absent.
Councillor Earls.
Present.
Councillor Agriman.
Here.
Councillor Junta.
Present.
Councillor Khan.
Present.
Councillor O'Brien.
Here.
President Councillor Connell.
Present. Are there any late filed items?
There's one late filed item. It's Communication 83, the CPA funding recommendation for Colby Farm.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late filed items?
Second.
And second, the discussion. Hold those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take that up in orders. Public comment, please.
Good evening. Stephanie Nikotic, 93 High Street. Excuse me, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the Newburyport Preservation Trust in support of the ordinance to prohibit use variances. This is the rule in most cities and towns in Massachusetts. And what it does is it ensures that when the city council does all of the hard work you do to require certain uses in certain zones of the city, that your rule, your law, cannot be simply overturned by the zoning board of appeals the next night. We think it's very important, particularly with all of the progress the city council has made in residential uses and will continue to make as the zoning advisory committee comes out with its proposed new use table, which has been very thoughtfully addressed. So, we do hope that you will support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. The next name on my list is Mark Moore. Mark?
Well, this will be timely. I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself. Mark Moore, 67 Curzonville Road. And as luck would have it, I'm speaking to you ahead of what I hope will be a confirmation to the zoning board of appeals. I met at length with Ed Ramsdale about three weeks ago. Spoke for about 90 minutes, and it just confirmed the importance of the work that that committee does. And I'm excited about the opportunity to join the team. I'll bring 30 years of experience as a finance professional, coupled with 30 years of experience as a homeowner in various communities on the North Shore. And the one I would highlight most recently was in Lynnfield, where Marcus Street Lynnfield was a pretty big deal for a small town and a big change from what had been the use of the land. And it was good to see, and it's an experience I'll bring to the committee, that when done thoughtfully within the law and when all constituencies can get together, you know, good things can happen and can add to the wealth of the community. So, I respectfully ask for your vote, for your confirmation, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Amanda Moore.
Hello, I'm Amanda Moore, no relation. 10 North Atkinson Street. And I'm here because I have prepared the permit asking for permission to have the party like at 1768 on Brown Square, which is celebrating Central Church's 250th birthday. And as you consider, if you have any questions, I will be here and be happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Bunyan.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce myself as Lori Bunyan, the HR Director for the city. I am a resident of Newburyport. I've lived here for five years and have the pleasure of meeting several of you already. And I'd like you to know that I'm very excited to be able to serve the community and in the community that I live. And I look forward to your appointment. I believe that you all have a copy of my resume, and I would welcome the opportunity to talk to you individually about anything, any questions about me or my background, about the 30 years of experience. I look forward to your appointment and working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Turner, and I can't read the last name.
Saccino.
I'm sorry.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Colleen Turner Saccino. I live at 15 Otis Place here in downtown. And my husband and I make handbags out of marine-grade material, everything but sailcloth. You could say our competition has that all sewn up. But we also just opened, forgive me, we also just opened a showroom workspace at 10 C Harris Street. I had the pleasure of meeting Afros last evening, and she brought to my attention that a lot of tonight's discussion is about potential opening of shops for cannabis. And as a new person working in a quasi-retail setting, I'm not on State Street, I'm not on Pleasant Street. In fact, you'll be reading a story in the Newburyport Daily News probably this week about Off the Beaten Path, where I speak with several other owners about how important is that our commercial space is growing. I think that something like a cannabis shop does not belong on the outskirts of our city. It actually encourages all the wrong aspects of how Massachusetts has come to embrace, the voters have embraced making cannabis legal, the city of Newburyport has embraced having a shop in town. And to put it outside almost makes it seem like it's still that dirty word and it's Danny Dealer slipping you a crumpled-up bag in one hand and pocketing $100 in the other. And I think, Newburyport, we're so progressive and always have been, that we should embrace it, and it should be a shop that's just like a jewelry shop. Things are behind glass, they're secure, there is nobody just reaching in and picking out penny candy like you might at Richdale. It's a serious business, and the city of Newburyport ultimately will benefit from this business. It'll be an incredible opportunity for income, and I feel to shove it to the outskirts takes away the potential for parkers paying fees in the parking lot, for shoppers to eat and go out, and ultimately to give Newburyport a name with pride. And done correctly with the support of the council can make a big difference and make us the forward thinkers we've always been. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. I might remind people that we have a two-minute limit on comments. Peter Fitzsimmons, this is not directed at you, Peter, necessarily, so. Is he here?
He was.
He's here. That's it.
Yeah, I'm, what I'd like to do is speak in reference to the marijuana moratorium, which was passed by the city council on May 29th, 21-05-14-18. The ordinance stipulated, quote, "During the moratorium, the city shall undertake a planning process to address the potential impacts of recreational marijuana establishments." The purpose of that, I'm assuming, was to go beyond just zoning and to address safety, security, youth impacts onsite use at cannabis cafes and private clubs, which could emerge after the end of the year when the CCC has looked at that. And also the enforcement of the many regulations in 935 CMR 500, put out by the Cannabis Control Commission, but enforcement often left up to the municipalities. I'm not looking for a verbal report. I'd like to see a written report from the city on just how much they have looked into this. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Ryan Partland. I hope I didn't mispronounce your name. Ryan?
Ryan Partland. I'm from Island 219 Northern. And I just came here because I read the article in the newspaper that was about the council's decision on the cannabis shops. And there seemed to be some disagreement within the council itself about whether it should be allowed within the zoning codes, or whether there should be just one that we sanction. And I would like to personally advocate that something like that should just be treated like a regular business. It should be zoned like any other business. I mean, I feel like there's a lot of stigma to it, and it is new, but we could do a lot more harm by drawing out the process. We'd lose business. Our town would be negatively affected by taking this too tiptoe-y. I mean, Salisbury is already starting the process of licensing this. And if there's a better service there, then I feel like people are just going to go there. And any concerns that many people in the community have are often based off of the controversy of legalization itself, which I think we need to recognize has already happened. And now we need to start thinking about how Newburyport can benefit the best from the system that is put in place by the state government. And I think, to mirror what previous speaker was saying, kind of shoving it into the side of the city, only allowing for one ever, I mean, just capitalistically having only one wouldn't benefit Newburyport that much in comparison with having multiple, because they'd have to compete with each other. I just, I think, on behalf of, sorry, on behalf of people in my generation, people that are building up Newburyport and deciding to move into Newburyport or not, I think it's important that we consider jumping in with the rest of Massachusetts into the issue.
Let the record show that we've been joined by Councillor Devlin. One more speaker, Lynn Schau.
Hi, I'm Lynn Schau. I live at 75 High Street.
I'm sorry to mispronounce your name.
That's all right, that's all right. It's very common. I also am here because I read in the newspaper today about the city council considering having pot shops downtown, which is close to my neighborhood. I was actually very shocked that it's even being considered, to tell you the truth. I think we've all heard the expression "going to pot," meaning the utter ruin of things. And that's how I feel about Newburyport. I think it's completely inconsistent with what we're telling our kids. I have four children, three of them are in public schools now in Newburyport, one's in high school down in Danvers. My two middle schoolers walk downtown. You know, on half-days, they go downtown for lunch with friends. I think it would be really a travesty to see them walking by pot shops when the school, Mr. Murphy in particular in the wellness classes, are telling them that this is an awful, awful thing. In terms of the previous speaker talking about the business benefits, I mean, I think that, you know, at a minimum, further study needs to be done on that. But, you know, in states that have legalized marijuana, car crashes related to pot have doubled after legalization. Testing positive for marijuana, much higher rates in the workplace has been a big issue that I would hate to see happen in Newburyport. I mean, we have a lot of businesses here that don't need that sort of thing. In terms of the tax benefits, it's really kind of a myth, actually. Public health costs related to big marijuana are at least 25% greater than the increased tax revenues due to workplace accidents, hospital admissions, traffic caches, and increased law enforcement costs. I think that we do not have a system in place in Newburyport to be able to deal with that. I'm actually opposed to having it at the traffic circle, which is in walking distance of the train station. I don't think we really want people coming to Newburyport to go shopping for their cannabis. You know, I understand that it's been voted legal by the state on the state process, but I don't know that you're all remembering that it is still illegal from a federal basis. You know, it's not able, it's a cash business, and if you think you're going to capture the tax revenue, I think you're really sorely, you're sorely mistaken. They're not allowed to use the wire system, they're not allowed to use the banks, they're not allowed to use checks, they're not allowed to use mail. There are lots of interesting systems that have cropped up to avoid this, but that's the status. It is avoidance. It does belong on the sides. It does belong where my kids don't walk next to it. It does belong, if at all, where people have to drive to get it. And so, I'm here to voice my strong opposition to having it downtown. I don't think, I haven't seen any studies, for example, like I suppose to, and we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That's the public comment segment of our meeting. I'd like to call a distinguished resident to the front of the room, where the mayor and I would like to present him with an acknowledgement of an important milestone. In case you don't recognize this fine gentleman to my left, this is former mayor and former secretary of Communities and Development. The names have always changed. Byron Matthews, who was one of the great leaders in bringing this city back 35, 40 years ago now. Mayor?
Thank you.
Is it 50? Took a while to get there, didn't it?
Picture right there.
50 something. Mayor?
Okay, so, we are here today in honor of Mayor Matthews' 90th birthday. So, we're going to read a little combination for him, Barry and I, and it would make sense as you reach this remarkable milestone in your life. And you're still, he was out weeding for three hours yesterday.
Yeah.
So, you know, still working, still sharp as anything, still love to talk to him and get his feedback on whatever we're doing in the city.
And there is some dispute about the day of his birth.
Yes.
His mother has one account, we're going to go with that one.
Anyway, so, a combination, the city of Newburyport hereby acknowledges and celebrates the 90th birthday of Byron J. Matthews, which occurred on August 29th or 31st, depending on, you know, 20.
Make sure I wasn't late, yeah.
Under the leadership of former mayor Byron J. Matthews, the city experienced a dynamic rebirth from 1968 to 1977 and created the foundation for the renaissance of Newburyport's downtown.
Byron then served as Secretary of the Communities and Development for the state under Governor Edward J. King from 1979 to 1983. A lifelong resident of Newburyport, Byron has continued to contribute to the well-being of a city and its surrounds by continuing to serve on the Board of Trustees at Anna Jakes Hospital, and by his service as past chairman of the Northern Essex Community College Board of Trustees from 1996 to 2007. As a great role model for those in public service, it's with a deep sense of appreciation that we simply say, "Happy birthday to you, Byron." And this is our recent habit, we sing "Happy Birthday." Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Byron. Happy birthday to you. Want to raise your hand?
Yeah. I like to lean when I speak, which I've been a lot of times when I was mayor and a member of the city council. I ran for the city council in 1961 and got elected that year, and took office in '62, served for three terms. And at that point, in 1967, a lot of people thought I ought to run for mayor. So, we entered that arena, and we got elected and took office in '68 to '78. And I would say that a lot of people say, "Oh, you did a great job." And now I say, "No, we did a great job. The community did a good job. The people that worked in city government did a good job." It takes a lot of people to make something happen, and I think you all know that. But I, I'd like to just tell you one thing about how you go take out your papers to run for office. I never took papers out. Someone else did it for me in 1961. That's how it was in those days. You never knew if you were running for office. I didn't have any ambition to run, and the next thing I know, somebody come into my place of business with my dad and puts down nomination papers all filled out. "You're running for the city council," is what he says to me. So, that's how I got into politics. And she was one of the Zabriski women in Newburyport. And Al Zabriski was her brother. And that's how I got into politics, believe it or not. Not Ripley, just believe it or not. So, I want to say thank you to everybody in the room and people in the city of Newburyport who have been really, I would have to say, they're the ones, can't come up with the right word, they're the ones that really supported us in our venture, as they support you in your ventures. And I was proud of being mayor, and I loved it, as you loved it. And city government is great, state government is great, federal government's great. We have good people. You only hear about the lousy guys, you know, about the good guys. And that's kind of unfortunate. So, I say again, thank you to all. I won't keep you. I know you got a lot of work to do. And thank you from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of my family. Thank you.
Thanks again. Happy birthday.
Run a good ship.
We'll try. I lost my pen between. You have an extra pen in your bag. He's going to find one for you. There you go. He's always got a bunch of pens. I should too. All right.
Mayor?
You're up.
Thank you. President Connell, members of the city council, and those watching at home, I will try to be brief to give you an update. I know you have a hefty packet in front of you tonight. Riverfest, I just, we did a debrief on the Tuesday after Riverfest, and I think we, overall, it was a very successful event considering the size of the event. I would like to take a moment and publicly thank Chief Leclerc, Marshall Murray, Tony Fornari, Wayne Ammaral, Richie Jones, who am I missing, Molly Edinburgh, and Frank Giacalone, and all their staff who worked tirelessly for weeks in terms of preparation and also the night during the whole day of the event overall. So, I think the satellite parking worked really well, we had minimal incidents. I think we've learned a lot from the running an event this large, and we certainly will use that information as we go forward. Spoke to the president of the chamber today, anecdotal evidence, reports that retailers and particularly restaurants did very well that day, which is also an important factor. The lieutenant governor was here for several hours during the Riverfest and had an opportunity to spend some time here at City Hall running through our list of projects it needs with her before I brought her over to meet Phil Phillips. And you see the picture there of our meeting there. We had a traffic safety advisory committee, a special one that we held last week because of the recent accident on High Street. Really are lots of concerns about the speeding and the number of accidents. Residents reported past history events, and we would like to put this as a priority on complete streets. As you know, tech engineering has the contract, they should be starting in a few weeks. They are the engineering firm of record working with Safe Roots to School. So, in the interim, a short-term measure will be to put some of those speed feedback devices up on each side of High Street by Marches Hill so that we can start capturing speeds, because residents report that people do slow down once they see their speed. At least that would be an interim step we can take. Just wanted to let you know that River Run lost their site for their cultivation, and so we will be there. I spoke to D'Souza, Mr. D'Souza, last week, and they're actively looking for an additional site in the business park for their small cultivation, so we'll let you know. So, we'll be redoing the host agreement at some point for that. The Intermodal facility, as you all have noticed, the precasts are coming in, and there's been no issues with transport to date, and it will continue for the next four to five weeks. The good news also is that Jordy Bynan is, Bynan is back, he started today, and that he will also, again, resume work over oversight of the Intermodal facility. Wanted to let you know that school started last week, and there were no significant issues. Everything went really well, first day of school for teachers. It was really nice, the students were there to welcome the teachers back, and with the high school band, which was really nice. But overall, I think that things are off to a really good start with the schools. The principal of the high school, Andrew Wolfe, presented his entry plan to the school committee last week. If this council would like to see that, just let me know, I'd be happy to push that to you, his slide presentation. This superintendent is working on his entry plan, and we should probably see that sometime before the end of the calendar year. We have been selected by DESI for a coordinated review. I listed some of the areas that they will be working on, so the staff, all the leadership team right now are scrambling to get our self-assessment finished and into DESI for them to come out to do that coordinated assessment. We had a vacancy in the assistant principal at the Knox School, master teacher there, who decided to go back to teach, Mr. Mahan, and so we are in final interviews for hiring that position. The Clifford City Rail Trail, you may have noticed that some progress has finally begun again in terms of getting the contractor to finish the punch list, which is quite extensive. And I thank again the residents of the city for being patient with us. People think that we are being neglectful in terms of care and maintenance of this rail trail, but we're not. It's not ours yet, we've let people use it, but I'm just asking for people to be patient for a few more weeks until we get this punch list finished. Had the opportunity to spend some time with Lieutenant Governor, talking to her about the $750,000 earmark in the environmental bond bill that's targeted for the cleanup of the PCBs behind the wastewater treatment facility. And we're working on a concerted effort with the planning office to put information together to release those funds. And I've also reached out to MassDOT and would like them to collaborate with us on that ask. We are finalizing a contract with Dewberry. They have been selected by Coastal Zone Management, CZM, to They have been selected by Coastal Zone Management, CZM, to be the engineering firm that will begin to make design recommendations for the rezoning section of the wastewater treatment facility. And it makes sense at that time to also incorporate any of the work that we need to do for raising up that section of the rail trail behind the wastewater treatment plant. I have attached the, to the end of your update, the signed order by Governor Baker for us, for approving the home rule petition for us to move forward on a special election for some property tax relief. What I'd like to do is to, over the next couple of weeks, if we could put together city and city council joint ad hoc group with Roseanne and potentially some friends of the seniors and begin to look at how we roll this out for an election in the spring. And we still have some parameters we need to work on in terms of that particular piece. The Mayor Gaden Moore Charitable Foundation, we had our annual meeting on Friday where a list of potential projects that we would like them to fund this year was presented. The major funding has been requested for this Moore Ridge and outdoor learning space commemorating Mayor Gaden Wells Moore. One thing that has not been well documented is acknowledging and representing the work that Mayor Moore did when he was the one who initiated the funding for the high school and was also, his last day in office, he laid the cornerstone. So, there'll be granite benches and an outdoor learning area in front of the high school that this foundation will be putting forward, and that, you'll see that granite block there will be marking that once the entire learning area has been established. Congressman Moulton was here to present the finalists and the winner of the Gomes Award yesterday, and it's for an individual who epitomizes the qualities of Reverend Gomes. And it was a really nice event, and then all the people who were there for the event went out and did some volunteer work on Plum Island. We also had yesterday the Exchange Clubs Field of Honor. Ceremonies were held to recognize our veterans, those who are active in the armed services and first responders. Julia Collins-Lender, who lost her husband in one of the World Towers, gave the keynote reflection, and it was a very powerful reading by her, and it's also taken from a book that she wrote about her experience as being a widow. And then just to close, just to remind you, tomorrow Molly and I will be leaving for the Global Climate Action Summit in San Francisco. As I had mentioned to you, this was invitation only, and because of our being part of, or my joining the climate change mayors, which represents 400 cities across the globe, we had to, we got an opportunity to apply to see if we would be accepted for this conference. And the invitation came from Governor Jerry Brown. It's a very high-level conference. We're anticipating being able to bring back some, you know, really new and innovative information to the city. The conference itself is free. We're staying with friends, so essentially we're paying for airfare in our per diem. So, we tried to make this as cost-efficient as possible because this was, we felt was a really good opportunity for the city in terms of joining that piece. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions from the councils?
Council O'Brien.
On satellite parking, how many cars were used and do you think made all the places with satellite parking, all the different places? Any idea?
I would say it's probably close to 1,000. The people were parking everywhere too, so we clearly needed more lots. But it was, it was, the one thing that I think was so significant as I was walking home, you know, hour and a half after the event, people were stopping me everywhere in the South End thanking me for no cars jamming up all the neighborhoods. So, it can be tweaked. They, we were only supposed to use 50 spaces at Mark Ritchie's, and that went way over, and so the businesses there aren't too thrilled, but Frank is taking care of that. But I think for the most part, it was very, very successful and just need more lots next time to be sure that, and I think more buses. It was hard getting people on the buses at the end of the day. But it was the first time that we've really had a successful event with satellite parking like this, so I think it was, it did work. No question about it. And people were getting on the buses with bags from shopping downtown, which we'd really like too, so.
Other questions? Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Well, never mind the consent agenda. I'm going to ask you first to walk through the consent agenda, and so we'll all follow along.
The consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes for August 27, 2018. There is no transfers. There's one communication, communication 82. It's fiscal year 2018, year-end financial report to refer to budget and finance. There's one appointment, appointment 50, for Michael Feliet, for Caitlin Circle Salisbury to the police department, and that's the end of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Very well. What we would like to do with the mayor's update?
Motion received and filed.
Moved, received and filed, seconded.
Please sign this or oppose.
Moved and seconded. Received and filed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It is received and filed.
Appointments, there are none.
Late file communication.
I was going to ask where we want to take that up. Would a council like to suggest a place to take that late file up? We could do it in regular orders.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Do it right now?
Right now.
That's fine. That's fine.
The motion is to move this item to planning and development. Is there a second?
Second.
And this is the Colby Farm.
This is the memo from, from the planning director regarding the Colby Farm Open Space Preservation and View Shed Protection. The idea is to fund it under CPA funding. Discussion.
Just very briefly, and I know we usually send these to budget and finance, but as I was kind of reflecting back, I mean, I think we should start sending these to the committee that they, this is effectively a land acquisition. I mean, it's a late file, so I haven't read everything, but it's what it looks like to me. I mean, if you want us, if somebody wants to object, it'd be fine, but that's my reasoning. I'm not being brain-dead here, so, you know.
Further discussion. Counselor Vogel.
Well, I mean, oh, excuse me. Thank you. It is, it is a request for funds, though. This has me a little bit turned around. It's a request for funds. It says subject to condition of the fund, so they're requesting $20,000. I mean, it's maybe both.
Is that a motion, counselor? Counselor Eggerman?
Yeah, just a point of information. So, there's a zoning amendment that goes with this, actually. So, it's really all the piece of the land deal. And there'll be, also be a third leg of the stool, which is a development agreement being drafted by KP Law. So, I, whatever you do, try to keep those three things together. Thank you.
Counselor Z.
I'm good. Thank you.
Are there any other suggestions, comments, questions at this point? So, the motion is to send this to planning and development. Hearing no further comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Planning Development has it. Thank you for bringing it up, Tom. We'll move on to appointments.
The second reading for appointment for Lori Bunyan, 96 Lime Street, Human Resources Director, till January 1, 2021.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's like, you know, every time we hire someone, it seems like we give people more money than the person that left. I was wondering how much money, if we gave any more money to this candidate. Because last time we hired a HR director, she got more money. So, I was just wondering if that happened this time. Could answer that. Thank you.
My name is Rick.
Yes, given the current market for this position, we had to offer a salary of $90,000 for the candidate.
And how much is that more?
The incumbent was making $87,000.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of this appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. My error.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
So voted.
All right. Thanks for the correction. I'll learn. We'll move on to Mr. President.
Orders. Counselor Z.
I'd just like to make a motion to receive and file the mayor's update. We went, we went over that one.
I think we did.
You did?
You did it. You already did.
We did that.
You were out of the room.
Okay.
No, you received and dialed it.
I make all the motions, but, all right. We went right to the committee. No, I'm good. Received and filed.
Table.
Yeah. We have before us an order, Order 58.
Order 58, CPA project number four, slate roof custom house. It was tabled at the last meeting.
Motion to remove from the table.
Motion to remove from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Counselor Eggerman?
Yeah, I just, don't we have to waive the rules to get the matter into the packet?
It was in the packet. It was just...
It was in the packet?
No, that, they, it was on your agenda. It was just not included in your packet.
It wasn't in the packet, yeah. So, I think we have to have, we have to waive the rules to...
It should have been considered a late file, sir.
That's okay. I actually believe the counselor is correct that we can waive the rules to take the matter up and take it off the table. And I'm going to comment on this since I suggested a path toward reaching a decision on this matter. We could then recommit this to the table, table it again, and by the 24th, we should have counsel, competent counsel, to offer some advice on whether or not we can actually take the matter up. If you recall, that was the question before us at our last meeting. So, Counselor Eggerman was asking for a, did you make that motion, counselor, to waive the rules, or does the sponsor wish to withdraw this table? I'll make it. Motion to waive, suspend the rules in order to allow discussion of the order. We had a motion on the table. Would that motion be vacated?
Or I could accept that as a friendly amendment and waive the rules and take it off the table.
Is that acceptable, Counselor Eggerman?
That's fine by me.
Okay. But you need eight. A friendly amendment to waive the rules and remove this from the table.
But, but just...
Roll call.
You'll need eight.
And we will need a roll call on that mess.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Eggerman.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
So voted.
It is off the ta, it is, I'm sorry, yeah, it's off the table. Is there a motion?
Motion to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Do we need a roll call on this, Trish? I don't think we do.
No.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Can't discuss a motion on the table.
Table.
All right. All those in favor of tabling this item?
We'll take it up on the 24th. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
There are no warnings as we can move to committee either.
Budget and finance. Counselor Tanta.
Motion to remove communication 70, trust fund repurposing.
Motion is to remove communication 70 from committee. It's been seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's off.
Motion to receive and file.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Tanta.
This really is a communication. The Simpson Trust is a trust of funds, stipulates money should be used to wet down dirt roads. And so, the, the administration is, is, has to go through, I believe it's called a sea prey process, to, to have the funds be able to be used elsewhere.
Very well.
Three, zero, received and filed.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Anything else, counselor?
Motion to remove transfer 24. General budget contingency, $27,496. It extends to multiple categories.
Second.
And seconded. Discussion.
To remove.
To remove, excuse me. Yes, to remove. We have to get it out of committee first. No questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
And seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, this is the, the, first of all, the funds were put in the contingency last year by the administration for this year, knowing that the contract would be negotiated. It has been negotiated. We met with Representative the Teamsters as well as the administration, and they agreed upon this, the funds transferred from the budget contingency to salaries for, it's the Teamsters Union and department heads. And this will fund the first year. It's a three-year contract. The contract entails cost of living increases over three years of 2%. It also entails a one-time salary adjustment for the assessor. The assessor was receiving a stipend for an automobile, and because of changes in, in job description, that's not, no longer necessary. However, the funds, it was, would determine that, that the funds were already allocated for the stipend would become part of her base salary. In committee, we discussed that. You will see that a third part of this agreement was a number of department heads received increases in their, in what I refer to as their base salary. The assessor would have received that increase. This year, just the stipend is used for it, and then in years two and three, her base salary will be paid out of the general budget. I think that, and incidentally, yeah. Incidentally, the assistant assessor, I believe, has assumed a lot of the roles of the assessor that would require an automobile. So, three, zero vote on it.
Further discussion. Counselor Z.
Just to add a couple of quick notes, the one part I was curious about was the MCPPO stipends, which are shown for 2,250. So, that's a procurement stipend, basically, for folks who choose to get trained and are approved by the mayor to do so. Procurement has been a discussion we've had, I think, over the last several budget cycles about how we buy things in the most efficient way. And what, to me, this represents, from the finance director, is we're moving towards having specialized folks within the departments that do procurement most often. I think DPS was toward the top of that list, if not at the top of that list, as opposed to having a chief administrative officer, which, as you remember from last year's budget and previous budgets, there's a stipend of about, I think it's $10,000 for that position. So, what we're told is next year, we should expect to, I'm kind of making a mental note for myself too, to see that number maybe come down in favor of this strategy. I'm sure there are pros and cons to both. I'm fine. I'm just not fine with both. So, we pick, pick one direction or the other. So, that was an important one. And the only other thing I think the chair didn't mention that I wanted to was, we did ask about what kind of market rate survey discussion was done, as that comes up often with these. And that was a part of the discussion, and comps were found at similar communities with similar job descriptions. That was something brought up in committee. So, this is reflective of that as part of the process, and I thought that was, would be important for you to know as well. And thank you.
Further discussion. Counselor Devlin.
There's a question for the chair of the committee. What does it mean in the transfer from section where it says the contingency was not budgeted for the enterprise funds?
Counselor Tanta.
Yes, the enterprise funds, the, the report was that those funds have, likely have sufficient funds to cover it because of, you know, people who leave, and so is likely to be covered. If not, they, we, you know, we would have to do a transfer to cover it.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of these transfers, say aye.
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 Opposed? Anything else, Counselor?
Motion to remove Transfer 25.
The clerk read that transfer, please.
This is a tran—Transfer 25 is a transfer from ACI travel allowance, $7,000—I mean, sorry, $3,300. Transfer from assessor's salary assessor, $3,300.
To remove.
We remove from committee. All those in favor of removing this item from committee, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Tanta?
Yes, I just referred to this. This is the $3,300 stipend for travel. Three, zero vote from committee, to approve.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Tanta?
Motion to remove Transfer 26.
Seconded.
Which is general budget contingency, $8,241.27, to multiple.
Moved and seconded. I believe by Counselor Devlin? It was the side of the table. I'm sorry. Counselor Zee? Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Here's a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Zee. Discussion. Counselor Tanta?
Yeah, so, not—at the end of last year, I think it was in July, was it July, that we approved this Afmi collective bargaining agreement? And this is, in essence, an addendum to that. In that agreement, a—for individuals who were on the last step were of a, what was that, a five-step system, received a six-week, people who had worked for the city for 15 years of vacation. The renegotiations were opened up, and an agreement was reached between the union and the administration, that in lieu of that six-week of vacation for people who had been here 15 years, that they, those individuals would receive a step increase equal to 3%, which is the same as the step increases between 1 and 2, 2 and 3, 3 and 4, 4 and 5. In the original agreement, the increase for the, this new sixth step was going to be 2%. Now, it's going to be 3%. And the $8,241.27 is the exact amount necessary in order to accomplish that. Three, zero in committee, to approve.
Further discussion. Counselor Zee?
Just a couple of quick comments. The $8,200 is an exact figure, but the only thing that couldn't be computed would be the impact of the additional vacation on overtime. So, that—the old—the agreement that we just ratified really never took effect, essentially. So, we don't have any data on that. And then, the other thing, just to memorialize it, is I asked if the finance director at our next meeting would submit the side letter as a communication. It was called a side letter, essentially the addendum to the agreement, to the contract, so it could enter our records as well and be public. So, that seemed to not be a problem. So, hopefully, we'll see it next time. Or if not next time, the one after, whenever it gets done, as a communication. So, you're aware why that comes in, because I suspect it will just be a receiving file. So, that's all. Thank you.
Further discussion. Counselor Devlin?
For the chair of the committee, the—so, they don't, no longer have the six weeks of vacation at this step. It's back down to how many weeks?
Five weeks.
Five. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Tanta, you want to run one more?
Of course, there's a representative of the administration and a representative of the union there. And I asked if they were happy, and they were okay with it, right, was the response.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm all done.
Education, I guess it's a short one, but perhaps you want to give us an update?
I just want to let everybody know that we will be back in action on Monday, September 17th, at 5:30 at the Senior Center. So, if anybody wants to join us for the joint ed meeting, please come on down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Nothing from General Government. License and permits?
Nothing to report.
Neighborhood and City Services?
Nothing to report.
Planning and Development?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove Ordinance 17, October 30, 2017, zoning amendment, no use variances.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of removing this from committee, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion to approve as amended.
Seconded. Moved and is there a second? Second. Second, Counselor Zee. Discussion. Counselor Agarwal?
Yes, the—this item be familiar to people on the previous, in the previous legislative session. It was voted at the end, our last session in December, to carry it over into the new session. Under state law, the advertising had to be done again, though, because it had been, it had been a while since the first planning board public hearing on the matter. At that time, in the winter, the planning board voted unanimously, I believe, to recommend approval, as did our committee. This time around, when we had the meeting last week, the planning board had a bare quorum of five, and they were not able to reach any agreement. They voted four to nothing to recommend approval with one abstention. However, our committee unanimously recommended approval. The amendment, which I'll read into the record, was part of that hearing and was adopted at that time, is another section, so it'd be on the second page, after the text, above the signature. And it's very short. It reads as follows, "And, comma, further, comma, that this ordinance shall not apply to complete applications filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals before August 1, comma, 2018." And to fill everyone in, this was all discussed last week. There is one application pending at the Zoning Board of Appeal for a series of use variances at 79 Parker. That had originally been scheduled to be heard August 28. But they didn't have a quorum, so it's going to be heard tomorrow, hence the grandfathering of that application. That's the only application I know of that wouldn't be captured. And with that, I hope you will vote yes.
Discussion. Hearing no further discussion. Counselor Zee?
Sure, I'd like to rise in support, and just a couple of things. You know, I kind of wasn't sure about this one, whoops, last year, when it first came in. But upon more thinking about it, and sort of observing, and the amount of work that I know is going in on the ZAC, I think it's time for this. We have—we've had some hard-fought use battles here, particularly the R3 to R2, which is something I felt strongly about. So, I'm okay with this, and I, you know, I keep asking for updates from the ZAC and getting them. So, I'm hoping that in short order, it will come in, and I think it's going to be lengthy. So, I think that's good, and will represent a lot of the time and thought that's gone into it. And just to not forget how important this zoning rewrite is, it just, it comes and it goes. But, you know, it's always important, and I think this is a good step towards protecting some of the work we've done.
Further discussion. Counselor Devlin?
I—I—my only concern about this is this is going to—one of the reasons that this is workable in a city and not in a town, is that if there's a real need to change a use or allow a use, they can come to us to change the zoning. And I get that. But my discomfort with this is it's removing some flexibility. In one respect, it's good that it come to us, because we are elected by the voters, whereas the ZBA is appointed by the mayor and not elected. But I am concerned that this will now become—you know, we get a lot of stuff here, and we handle a lot of material. This is an enormous package. And it's not like we didn't have a meeting last—you know, we had our regular scheduled meeting. We didn't have everything on it, but we had enough on it. So, we handle it. I go to a lot of city meetings. We handle a lot for a city of 18,000, for essentially unpaid counselors. We handle a lot here. And we're adding to that burden. It's not—when someone now needs a use variance, they're not just going to say, "Oh, I can't do that at my property." They're going to come to us, and we're going to get a lot of these. And one of my concerns is ZBA is immersed in zoning, and immersed in what's going on in our city, and we're not. We're immersed in many other facets of the city, but that's not one of them. And so, I'm concerned that this is going to be coming to a body that, you know, part of me is a little concerned that, you know, we're going to do things—we already do things. We have some ordinances that come in, that people just did it to make a resident happy. It might not be in the best interest of the community, but they did it to make a resident happy. We have to take some care with that, I think, or we're going to get flooded. So, that's my concern. And I actually put that to the sponsor, you know, because I am interested in—I'm not making an argument against it. I'm kind of, you know, talking about what the possibilities could be, and would be interested in an answer to that.
Thank you. Counselor Agarwal?
Yeah, I did talk with the counselor-at-large about this. Just some more facts. So, I believe there are 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts. Director Port and I have come up with maybe 80 that allow use variances at all. So, just so you know what's common in Massachusetts, a use variance is weird and unusual, and it's not—it's not best practice. I am responsible for most of the heft in this week's packet, but, you know, just to— most of that is preservation restrictions. I think we have three of them, which you don't have to commit to memory.
But— That was not directed at you.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, that's okay. But I think this actually is a better way to go. And I—in my opening speech, I didn't give a lot of detail on what the ZAC has been doing, the Zoning Advisory Commission, Committee, but we've done a ton of work on the zoning tables. And basically, after all of those months of work, what we figured out is, you know, we can handle all of the unusual uses with the use tables, you know? We have a pretty liberal use table in Newburyport. So, anyway, that's enough speaking on this. I'll sit down.
Further discussion. Hearing none. Last for a roll call vote on this matter.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl?
Yes.
Counselor Agarwal?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
So, voted.
Yes, the next thing I'm going to bring out out of order, given public interest, is going to be Ordinance 24, introduced on June 11, 18, zoning amendment, marijuana retail sales locations.
25?
What was that number again?
Oh, yeah.
24. It's the eighth item on the hit list.
And was there a second? To remove this matter from committee. It's seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Play of order?
Counselor Vogel, excuse me. I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
If I may.
One moment. I believe we had a motion, and it was seconded. It's time for discussion. Just a minute, please. Is this point of order?
It is.
Yes, I have to accuse myself. I have a client that I don't represent within the confines of Newburyport, but has an interest in some property in one of these zones. And they have not only expressed an interest in pursuing retail marijuana across the state, have hired counsel to do so. It's not me, but I'm not only guided by the Ethic Commission here, but the Mass and New Hampshire Board of Borrow overseers, and I have a conflict, and I need to go.
Counselor.
The number. Which number are we looking at?
Number eight. It's like the 881 in the.
Yeah, I gave the wrong date. I'm sorry. 61118. It's Ordinance 24.
Zoning amendment, marijuana retail sales locations.
It's two Ordinance 24. Look for 61118 further down.
Counselor Vogel? Yeah, just one second. We've got to find this, Dan.
It's the second page of the list of committee items.
I have it as the eight.
Okay, I have this.
Maybe we could read it, so we know—we're all talking about the same thing.
Could you give us the thumbnail on this, please? This is—
It has the amendment proposed in committee, August 8.
Right.
That one.
Thank you. Sorry, everybody.
So, where do you want me to start this?
Yeah. Did we get a summary? But I can't find it. Here it is.
Sick, it's table—
It's after the ballot question. No, it's after the Coast Guard Auxiliary Bill.
Section BD, Table of Regulation, Use Number 8 Marijuana Establishments with Retail Sales and 803 Medical Marijuana Treatment Center of Registered Marijuana Dispensaries with Retail Sales shall be permitted only by special permit in the following zone districts, as so indicated in the said tables. And it's a business district, and then also, Use 801 and 803 are permitted, are so permitted solely within the certain B1 zoning districts centered around the intersection of State Street and Route 1, Route 1 traffic circle. In addition, Use 801 is limited to the marijuana retail subtype. For further limitation, C-section, trying, we're, okay. Then, the planning board shall act as a designated special grant-granting authority for this use.
I think that pretty much captures it.
It's the traffic circle one. It's the easiest way to say it. Traffic circle.
Counselor Vogel? Thank you.
We're on the same page.
Theoretically. So, I rise opposed to bringing this out of committee. And I realize that that's a little bit of a unique effort here on the council floor, that we generally bring things right out, and then we discuss them. There's a number of reasons, and I'll see if I can be succinct in why. First of all, there has been a turnaround from the Attorney General, Martha Healy, with the discussion about medical marijuana dispensaries, which says that we are—cities are not allowed to, or not allow, medical marijuana dispensaries. And I think that plays into our whole discussion about marijuana in general, retail or otherwise. And so, I think that since that has changed, I think that that is something that really needs to be discussed in committee, sort of a holistic approach to how we're approaching marijuana. The other thing that is troublesome to me is that this, these ordinances went to the committees of the whole, which means that we were—all were invited to these, to these committee discussions. Committee discussions are a little bit looser than the discussions that happen here on the floor. And a lot gets done, because it's more back and forth. Again, it's a little bit, a little bit more casual. We don't necessarily stand. There's a bit of a debate that goes on between us, and things get, things get worked out. Well, the committee meetings that I went to, they were, they were not attended by all of us. And in fact, at one committee meeting, there were three committee members, and two other, and myself and one other committee, one other counselor. Hardly productive. Hardly productive. At that particular meeting, and one of the points that was brought out by the committee was, one of the main points of concern as to why no other areas in town should be discussed, other than the traffic circle, and in particular, why Story Avenue area, if you will call it, should not be discussed, is because of the fear of crime, that, that element, that the Bonnie and Clides were going to come into town, and they were going to head into these facilities. Because they were close to the highway, they were going to come in, we're going to have lots of crime, and then off they were going to go, notwithstanding that there's about a dozen traffic lights in the Story Avenue area. That was what was going to happen, which is kind of counter to the idea of putting it just at the traffic circle, where you could just hop on Route 1 or 1A and be out of town in a snap. Nonetheless, I don't think that that—if that point was discussed, and that point was used in their discussion and reaching their conclusion, that we should not allow retail marijuana in the Story Avenue area, that is false. I have since done some research, and in fact, there is documentation that this—that concern has been reached by other people and has been researched. And crime has not risen as a result of retail marijuana. And contrary—
Point of order, Mr. President.
From committee or the—
One moment.
We're discussing about moving from committee, not going to a thesis on marijuana. So, you know, I think we've gone back past what the reason—
Thank you, Counselor. Would you limit your comments to the reason for your vote, without going to the detail of the subject?
The reason for my vote is I think that the information that was discussed at the, at the, at the committee meeting was inaccurate. There are other cities and towns that are taking creative and thorough steps. I think that we are lacking in those steps. I think we need to, we need to be a little bit more creative, and we need to get out there. That's all. I'll sit down, if that's what's going to happen.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Zee? The question is, do we remove this from committee?
I don't think it's fair to disparage the work of the committee. I attended some of the earlier meetings. We've had several public joint hearings with the, with the planning board. It's ready to come out, and I think it's—with all due respect, it's more black and white that you're making it, but that will bleed into the, into the discussion. So, let's take it out of committee and have the debate.
Counselor Agarwal?
Yeah, I—the precedent's set by not bringing something out of committee, because someone is unhappy with how the committee meeting went.
Further discussion on removing this matter from committee. And let me say to the members who stood a moment ago, Counsel Vogel had previously asked me for the opportunity to speak on removing this from committee and that's why I gave him the latitude to speak on that matter. Perhaps went a little far afield, but that was in part due to the commitment that I made to him to allow him to speak on the matter. All those in favor of removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll vote no.
Thank you, Counsel. Is there a motion now?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to approve as amended in committee dated August 8th, 2018. And I will note some Scrivener's errors, but those aren't material.
Second. Moved and seconded.
Before you, I'll just describe the Scrivener's errors.
I was going to ask you, going into discussion, could you describe the details of that in case it's not in front of the clerk or not clear to the clerk right now?
Absolutely. So in the asterisk, there's duplicative wording. Use, it says in the asterisk after B-1 business district asterisk, uses 801 and 803 are permitted and it should just read solely within that certain. There's, there are three extra words, are so permitted that have no meaning. And the other Scrivener's error is actually from the original, not the amendment. The section that deals with licensing marijuana establishments is Roman numeral 31. So when you look at H, it says C-section 30, it should be C-section 31. And with that, I can go to the merits with your permission or I can wait.
Okay. Is that clear to everyone who's reading along?
Mm-hmm.
I recognize Counsel Agarman if you want to speak to the merits of this proposal.
Yes, thank you. You know, there's been some coverage in the newspaper. I was interviewed on Friday and most of my remarks are going to be around that, what I said there, which is contrary to what some may think, the question of zoning is not a binary, do we allow it in town, do we not allow it in town? You know, zoning, which is very old in the report and disputes over it put Bossy Gillis in the Salem County jail a couple of times.
Yeah.
Is about how much of what goes where. And so when we think about, okay, we have a new use coming, where are we going to put it? And that is tied up with the other debate, which is do we allow it at all? I'm not proposing, although it is possible, to go forward with the ballot measure, which was written into the 2016 statewide measure. It said, a city that approves the sale of marijuana can go back to their voters and say, well, do you approve it in your particular town? I think we were all trying to find a way to accommodate a new use, but as I said to the newspaper, it is undeniable that this is an immature industry. It's just not there yet. We all have our own experiences in various walks of life with marijuana per se, but what we were dealing with is how do we accommodate a use which does not currently exist in Massachusetts and how do we, how do we deal with that? And as far as data goes, we had testimony about what goes on in other states, Colorado, Washington and so on. And my point is very simple, is that downtown Newburyport is not like our Route One Business District or our Story Avenue Business District. Those are car oriented, post-war style retail strips. That's what they are. Downtown, by the skin of its teeth, with the help of former Mayor Matthews, was meticulously preserved and the issues like signage and what goes in windows and what the pedestrian experience is, all that stuff, it simply is not honest to say that we can expect marijuana retailers to move into a pleasant street location tomorrow, say where the Szechuan Chinese restaurant used to be, and plug in as if it's just any other business. I think that's all what, that's all what we would desire and the, I've heard the jewelry store analogy before, it was brought up during public comment, and someday we may very well have an industry like that, but that's not where it is right now. So for example, it is absolutely true that the customer transaction invariably is in cash. So my personal experience is going to a medical dispensary in Salem where it's, it looks like an industrial building. It's actually owned by a Newburyporter, so I would expect the same person to possibly want to put one here and that's fine. This is legal right. But they only take cash, so there's an ATM by the front door. So, and they have to have a guard sitting there in a chair next to the ATM. It's not a pejorative or a stigma, it's just a fact of what the experience is. That's not typical for downtown retail in Newburyport. Also, my observation was there was a lot of in and out traffic, people dashing in in their car, running into the store, getting what they need, running back. It's destination retail. It is not, at this point, it's destination retail, it's not casual retail where you link trips, where you park once and, you know, you browse and do several purchases downtown, which is the model of downtown. It's also true that, and Mr. Fitzsimmons gave the testimony, so I'm glad someone corroborated it, my understanding is the Cannabis Commission at the state level has not yet promulgated rules on onsite consumption. We just don't know where that's going. They may allow it, they may not allow it, they may have rules that are harsh or liberal, all that stuff, who knows? But it's an unknown and we do know that if you have a retail location and that's in and they will be able to add, if it's allowed under the CCC, onsite consumption and we just haven't accounted for that. We don't know what to do about that. And that's the further study that I think others have alluded to. So very carefully, and you have a map, we worked with staff, with Andy Port, to figure out, okay, how can we have a viable location, a bona fide retail location where it is possible for several establishments to possibly go in without necessarily jumping in feet first and allowing it in all of our retail areas without really knowing what we're getting into. And again, it's not a pejorative on any particular use. There are other uses that we don't allow everywhere. You can't open a car wash in downtown Newburyport. It's not saying that we hate car washes or that car washes are, you know, are like drug dealers. It's saying, it doesn't quite go here because of the nature of that use. And this is the compromise that I think is necessary, even if you don't necessarily all agree with me that we need to err on the side of caution and revisit this once we have more facts, remember that we need eight votes and that's zoning. And that's why we get the big bucks, as Counsel Devlin pointed out. It is what we're elected to do. We're here to hash out and reach something that the community can accept as a norm and then the administrative agencies go forward with that. And I hope, you know, I'm happy to answer questions about the mechanics of how this zone will work, how the buffer zones do not make it impossible to open a retailer, but why especially for me as the Ward Two Counselor, I think it belongs to start in a car oriented retail area at one end of my ward and not at the moment downtown.
Thank you. It was a tie. So I'm going to go with Counsel Khan.
Thank you, Council President. I'm standing here actually in opposition of this zoning ordinance as amended and I've actually come quite, I've had quite a journey on this topic, I'll be absolutely honest. I did not vote in favor of the referendum in 2016. I'm one of the counselors that introduced, you know, making sure we had a ballot question in place to go back to constituents and see, do we want to ban it since we were a yes city? I've also been in favor of the moratorium to give us time to zone it correctly. So given all those aspects, I really have had a journey and this journey has had a lot to do with doing research and looking at the Cannabis Control Commission, looking at what other cities and towns are doing and then talking to constituents as well. And so here's a couple of things that I really want us to think about. What we are doing should not be reactive and I really want that to sink in because what we are doing is we are looking at our city holistically and trying to define a new legitimate business that our state has actually legitimized. It's not in our hands, it's in the state's hand. Our job as city counselors, as sitting here today, is to make sure we are doing our job in zoning for it appropriately and please let that sink in. The rotary, I mean, looking at this map, I mean, too bad I have an iPad and I don't have paper to show, but it's not as dramatic, but on this map that we look at, we are looking at our city and we're carving out this piece of our city that is, one, right by the traffic circle, which we have known that a pedestrian died maybe a few years ago, two, is if you go and look at those businesses, it's very easy to go count them on like two hands maybe. But it's enough to say that knowing the buffer zones, I don't know how much we all really understand the buffer zones, it's actually complicated. There are 500 square, 500 feet is what the state says, the ordinance is here, say 250. We have some flexibility. We have some ways in our zoning to do it right. And I'm sorry, I did go to some of the meetings, I don't think what we mentioned is the planning board did not approve this. They actually wanted it anywhere and everywhere in the city and I think that's an important piece to understand. I am actually looking to our city to help us with this issue. I want the city planner to show me the whole map and think of creative ways, like an overlay district where we factor in the buffer zones, where we think about businesses that are not going to be forced to maybe force out small businesses. I mean, this is a lot bigger than we realize and just putting this little map with this little carved out area indicating that this is the compromise we're going to make today is not good enough for me and I just can't support it realistically. Again, I am someone that has a journey here in coming to the place I am today and now I want to see us do something that makes sense and that shows that's a collaborative effort from the city department, from the planners, show us a map, consider maybe an overlay district and look at the buildings and availability. If you walk downtown or if you walk other locations, we're not just talking about Pleasant Street, there are other places for retail and I think we're really, really, we need to really, in my opinion, go back to the drawing board on this one and have a really honest conversation of really zoning for this new business that's legitimate in our state and zoning for it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Z.
Thank you. First thing I want to say is I'm just sort of incredulous at the comments from the two out large counselors about what a city counselor's job is and how to zone things or the process wasn't good. I mean, I find it, I'm not on the committee, but I find it to be insulting, to be honest with you. We have to rewind a little bit. We had an ad hoc cannabis committee. We didn't just start this last week. This isn't the first iteration of the first run. I certainly understand what buffer zones are and if you've come to this table and you still don't know that, then that's definitely a problem, but yes, we understand we have flexibilities. So I just have to say that, you know, the planning board has been involved, the planning director, I sat in his office myself personally and looked at all the maps. I know the ad hoc committee, you know, we start with a very simple base, there are only three places in the city that are zoned for retail. So this isn't like some Y universe here. Okay, so I just had to get that off my chest because it's frustrating. To the merits at hand, I went to several of the meetings too and the one thing I noticed in every meeting is every time somebody's speaking, there's somebody in the audience whose head is shaking no. It's unbelievable. So one person gets up and says, I found a study that says this, crime goes up and then somebody shakes their head no. And then somebody said, crime goes down and somebody shakes their head. Okay? Even tonight, it's happening here tonight. When I look at the vote on marijuana, I basically look at it as 50/50. If you pick one of your neighbors to your right or your left, there's a good chance that you voted differently from them. So out of Counsel Agarman's comments, which I appreciated, the one word that sticks out to me is compromise. And I am advocating for this because to me, it represents compromise. It is not perfect for the staunch supporter of cannabis who would want to have it in every zone and it is not going to placate or make happy the person who never believed in cannabis in the first place and thinks it's an awful nightmare. What my opinion is, is irrelevant. This is compromise. That's the one thing, I mean, we need to get to eight in order to pass something and I'm begging you, pleading with you to consider voting for this as a way for us to move this forward. The other thing I'm kind of always amazed at during the debates is when the crime question comes up or the cash question comes up, then all of a sudden the arguments are rolled out about how cannabis is different from other kinds of retailers. They have better security, they have more regulation, they're not allowed to do this, it has to be behind that. And then all of a sudden, when we talk about restricting it to just a certain zone, the other argument comes out, which is that this should be everywhere, it should be treated like anything else. Well, you can't have it both ways. Pick one or the other. Cannabis is either very special because it's highly regulated and has to be walled off and all these things, or it's the same as everything else and therefore should go in the same place. So what I keep coming back to is there are very divergent views on this. This is not a rehash or a rediscussion about whether it should or should not be legalized. We need to find a place for it to live in Newburyport, which brings me to my next point about this specific zone. Welcome to Newburyport. Old city, old zoning, weird patterns of land use lead to difficult things when it comes to new uses. And so if we were building a city from scratch today, would we zone it this way? Of course we wouldn't. Would we build, you know, homes right on the street and have blind corners everywhere? Of course we wouldn't. So we have to accept that Newburyport is unique, which I think is why we all like it, love it, and accept that, you know, sometimes creating odd zones and odd shaped zones is just how it goes and it's ironic, we just passed the use variance ban because I think that's how a lot of the zoning got messed up over time, is residential was allowed to infiltrate into retail zones and retail was got into, so when you have the mixing. So this is a purely pragmatic proposal. It is not meant to say this is a reflection of how you feel personally about marijuana. It just says, we put a lot of time and work in, which is where I respectfully disagree with my colleagues, and we came up with this, we can go back to the drawing board and we're going to be right back here arguing about the same thing. There are a lot of things at play. So again, I don't know how else to stress it, but to beg you to consider passing this and as with all zoning, I agree with the Ward Two Counselor, always, you know, you see how it goes in a couple of years and if it goes well, or a year even, and if it goes well, you can certainly expand to other places. If it doesn't go well, well, then you have your answer. So this is the middle of the road and I think actually that's something we need more of in this country. So why don't we do a little bit of it tonight?
Counsel Shan.
So thank you for bringing up the word compromise. That is exactly what we did when we zoned for marijuana in the industrial park. We compromised with the members of the business park and we took retail out of the business park. That was the compromise we reached with them and that's the right, it was the right thing to do for the business park, getting retail out because they had concerns. This is a compromise. This puts us into a small section of our city that would allow us to look at this from a holistic standpoint. Can it grow? Is it going to work? We can start looking at zoning afterwards to see if we want to expand. If it works out well, same way with the business park. If it works out well, we can always change the zoning. It's not like what we do tonight is going to be the end all be all, it's said in stone. We can always change. So I support this for the very same reason my Ward Two Counselor said it. This is a compromise and I think we need more of it.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Khan again.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I do want to say, I do know people worked hard on that. So if that came across, I did not mean that intention. My point was just to say that there are certain, I did attend meetings and I did go to the planning board discussion, which was a committee of the whole. And one of the things I have to tell you, it was a little bit of a stifling conversation. I did not think that we had a really like, let's look at the whole city, let's talk about all the buffer zones. And I'm sorry if I said people did not understand buffer zones, but there's more to it as well in terms of being close to residential buildings too and being on the facade and other aspects within certain zoned areas. So there's actually quite a bit within the regulations that dictate how buildings can look. So I really want to clarify that. I appreciate that a lot of work is going into this. The ad hoc committee that happened last year, I was always trying to find out if there were notes and what was the outcome and discussion from that. So again, that's where I refer to our planning, planning city planner who was involved in those conversations and I was hoping, and we did have some, where we saw the whole map. And here's why, you know, I am all about compromise. Get to a place that makes sense, that could really work for our city. But to me, compromise has to also involve somewhat of some thinking about the businesses that we are looking at and that we're looking to bring. So one of the things I have to think about, and I'm just saying for myself, is because of the way this business is, to me, patron management, public safety and the traffic those conversations, and I was hoping, and we did have some, where we saw the whole map. And here's why, you know, I am all about compromise. Get to a place that makes sense, that could really work for our city. But to me, compromise has to also involve somewhat of some thinking about the businesses that we are looking at and that we're looking to bring. So one of the things I have to think about, and I'm just saying for myself, is because of the way this business is, to me, patron management, public safety, and the traffic and vitality of our city are important factors when we talk about zoning. And so for me, knowing this is an all cash business, those are some of the parameters we know. And those are the ones that I hope we are mindful of when we think about zoning. We get two facilities in our city because it's 20% of our packaged liquor stores, as we all know. And so that's nine, so we get 1.8, they round up. So we get two facilities, two retail shops. The other aspect that I do want to point out that the other councillor at large mentioned is regarding the medical retail aspect as well. Now, medical retail is the 803 reference that you see, use 801, use 803. These are important aspects to consider because when we are talking about the use of whether it's a retail for recreational or retail for medical, those are the businesses we're bringing. So again, I don't mean to not show compromise, but I actually want to bring some thought process that will kind of bring some concept of what we are trying to identify and for what part of our city. So the remote and low visibility is a concern. Knowing that this is an all cash business, there are, this part of town is not the most visible place to be. And in terms of bringing people who, you know, I hear that it's a destination type market, I disagree with that. I think a lot of the people frequenting will be my neighbors and other residents of Newburyport. So I find that that's kind of, when I hear the arguments here on the floor and even the discussion of the committee, I feel like there's still this place of hesitation and fear. And that's why I just want us to maybe rethink of going back and looking at this with another map where we can, again, I say the word overlay, because I feel like just looking at these three locations without considering some other substantial factors will really hurt us in the long run. Thank you.
I've already spoken.
Councillor Vogel.
Thank you. I wish I could be as eloquent. I stumbled through eloquence. A couple of things. I believe that we didn't just start on this, and this has just come to us. We've been working on this a while. The point being is that a lot has changed from the very beginning. We've come to a lot more understandings. The state has provided a lot more guidelines. And also, there are those guidelines from the state that, a lot of that, we don't have to worry about, it's there. We have to apply the guidelines from the state that are there. So we don't have to work that. The all cash piece is not 100% accurate. There are banks that are accepting it, there are banks involved. So just to say all cash and to go like that is not an accurate statement. One of the things that really concerns me about avoiding the downtown area, even if it was just from Pleasant Street on up on State, and I'm really trying hard not to take it personally that you guys are directing this at Pleasant Street because I have a business there, and I, full disclosure, I am not interested in the marijuana business. But there are, on Pleasant Street, one, two, three, four empty spaces, a fifth coming along, there's two empty spaces on State Street, another one coming along. My concern is about downtown. Truly and truly, truly, my concern is about downtown. Downtown, believe it or not, I walk downtown every single day. Every single day I walk through downtown. I talk to a lot of merchants, a lot of business owners. There's a struggle going on. There's a thing out there called Amazon. Have you heard about that? If we're not careful, Newburyport is going to be a food service and real estate downtown. That's what's going to be there. Because people are not coming to buy. And my thinking is, is that we approach this differently. Instead of accepting the idea or thinking about the idea as a car-oriented or a destination business, we make it a business as part of our downtown. You go, hey, I got to go downtown and get a little Bud. Okay, not a six-pack, but otherwise. You go to Green Street, you walk up to maybe Upper State or Part of State, you do what you have to do, and on your way back, you buy a candle. You buy something to eat. You pick up the pizza, whatever it might be, encourage traffic. We need to do everything we possibly can, everybody, to shop locally. I'm telling you, it's coming. Amazon is going to strangle us and it's going to put to the death of retail businesses downtown. And this can be part of it. Not to mention that the state has estimated that we're looking at about a half a million dollars in tax income from retail sales. How many teachers is that? How many times are we going to battle again for a half a million bucks? Small number compared to our $62 million budget, but still, it's a half a million dollars. So the onsite consumption piece, I would be appalled if the state did not allow us that opportunity to turn that away. But, you know, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. Right, it's not typical cash, it's not oriented, okay. It's an immature industry. Well, it may be immature here in Massachusetts, but it has been vetted in other states, and there are studies around it. There's a lot of data that comes around it. And the Cannabis Commission has pulled that stuff together, and that's what's provided the guidelines around all that experience of other states. Compromise, the overlay districts, maybe parts of downtown, maybe certain sections, maybe parts of the Story Avenue area, or maybe even other parts of towns that we haven't even thought about. We're looking, we've got to look at this big picture, we've got to look at this as the future. And if we wait, guess what? A year from now, all the surrounding communities are already going to be established and nobody's going to be interested in being here, and we're going to lose that half a million bucks or more. With that, I'll take a seat. Thank you.
Councillor Janta.
Sorry. You know, I have to say, I'm very frustrated with this conversation. We have a brand-new business that everybody in this room can admit that the state has not caught up yet. We're still learning, decisions are still being made. There are many people in the town that want this to happen. We have an opportunity right now to open up an area for this to happen, for this business to prove itself. And if the next step is, wow, this was really good for the city, then yes, we'll open up downtown. But the point is, is that you have a business right now that the state is still figuring out. That's the biggest problem with all this. And the comment about, yeah, there are potentially, or there are some banks that are doing it. There are no banks in the state right now that are doing it, none. Century Bank is the only bank that was doing medical or cultivation, and they're still hesitant on whether or not they want to get into this. Now, I'd like them to get into it because it'd be a lot easier, you know, if you could do different transactions. But the point is, is this. I am certainly no fan of recreational marijuana, but I know that people in the city voted for it. But the reality is this, this is a good beachhead to get started. And to say that businesses wouldn't be attracted to this spot, it doesn't make sense to me. Of course they would be. You have a little strip mall in there with a ton of parking. You have a hardware store in there with a ton of parking. You have a whole bunch of different areas in this one little zone that would be very appealing to a business if they wanted to get started in Newburyport. And this whole thought of, is if we don't run into this gold rush that the surrounding cities are going to take all the money away, is just ridiculous. There are liquor stores everywhere. Salisbury hasn't cornered the market on liquor stores. I mean, for God's sakes. We need to zone something and get control of this, and we need to see how it goes. And if this is a good thing for the city, then we move on from there. But we're just looking for a compromise so we can get moving forward. Or we can fight for a few months, but I don't want to do that. I want to get something on paper done so we can keep moving forward. This has been going on for months, and it's time for us to come together on this and get started.
Thank you, councillor. Further discussion? Councillor Aggerman.
Yeah, just to respond to a couple of points. So on the medical marijuana, so just to be clear, both the original proposal by councillor Earls and the amendment that I'm proposing and came out of committee, and yes, the Planning Board, I neglected to say that was on purpose. They talked a lot about having a distance between establishments and maybe having a quota on how many, but they generally wanted it in all parts of the city. But there's no differentiation in what we've written between medical and non-medical. So the decision that was actually a reversal. So Margaret Hurley, who's the head of local government for the Attorney General, she reviews ordinance, excuse me, bylaws for towns. Cities don't have to send their ordinances in, they're more autonomous, but towns actually have to send their proposed bylaws past Margaret to get her approval. And a few years, a couple of years back, she had ruled that, or implied at least, that you could differentiate between, I'm sorry, that with the new ballot measure that passed in 2016, you could now ban medical retail marijuana. And then she just decided in another opinion that, no, that doesn't make sense, you can't ban it. But it's just a red herring. We're not treating it any differently here, so I don't really know how that plays in. On what I mean by destination, I'm not quite, I think the councillor at large was saying, no, it'll be her neighbors that are going, that's not the differentiation. It doesn't mean non-residents versus residents, it means it's an errand. So for example, one of my earliest memories is waiting in the back of my mom's Firebird while she ran into Learys every weekend. So my sister and I would wait, and she'd run in, and she'd get her gala wine and come back. So that's what I mean. So there probably was a time where there were a lot of liquor stores downtown, but that's not really the model now. Mostly they're in areas with parking. I think you all have that experience. Shop windows, I guess I didn't explain that well enough. The problem with shop windows is actually, this is what councillor Zede was getting at where, you know, the advocates for marijuana everywhere immediately kind of want to have it both ways and say, well, it's just like any other retailer, what's the big deal? Or, and then at the same time saying, it's specially regulated, don't worry. Well, the shop windows is a real problem for downtown, at least in my view of downtown because, and again, that's why I'm looking at Pleasant Street, we have big plate glass windows. Well, under the state regs, you're not allowed to display marijuana. There's even rules on, you know, pussyfooting around the word cannabis and marijuana. That's pretty weird for what's supposed to be a pedestrian-oriented retail center, you know? So imagine Sejuan with just empty windows. That was my point there. And then finally, look, zoning absolutely is about money. It's about money. There's a lot of money behind this industry, and I fully understand, for example, why if I owned the building with the Sejuan restaurant in it, I'm probably hoping that I can get a marijuana retailer. So I'm keeping it vacant. I mean, that's just common sense. That's business, that's the American way, God bless them. But when we make zoning decisions, we all the time have to make the decisions on what goes where, how much, you know? It doesn't just, it's not just binary, we allow it everywhere, we don't allow it everywhere, and let the market decide. That's just not reality. And we can't, you know, decide, well, you know, we don't want Mr. Kelly to open a marijuana retailer at the old Labadini's restaurant, we want it at Sejuan because, you know, whatever reason. That's not really proper for us. That's all I want to say.
Councillor Zede and then councillor Khan.
Yeah, I'd like to, just sorry, we're rewinding to respond to a couple of things. So first of all, the first Planning Board meeting several months ago, the first joint hearing on the first one, we did talk about all the locations. We really did. And I appreciate every member of the Planning Board service and I appreciate their opinion, but they have been very clear from the beginning. They want it everywhere. That is, that has been consistent, and that's great. I think that's a very fair for them and transparent for them to say that, and that's been true right up through the consideration of this one. With that being said, and with all due respect, that isn't what I'm hearing from the majority of people that have contacted me. So we get into this battle every two weeks. Well, I talk to 100 people and you talk to 200 people. I get emails from my ward people, and there has been nothing consistent about the commentary except for one thing, and that's that I don't want it downtown. And when you prod people and ask them why, they can't always explain, if they're even able to explain at all. But you know what? Residents don't have to explain it. It's not, they don't have to have a reason. It's just their opinion, and they're welcome to have that opinion. And it's our job to take that opinion and formulate it into a compromise plan. So what I'm trying to get at is, I want to run headfirst into the core of this argument, which is, do you want it downtown or not? And let me just make my opinion bluntly clear so we can get on with it and not wait another two months to have the same debate, which is, do you want it downtown? My answer is no. At least that's my answer today. Could I be changed in a year? Sure. I just don't want it downtown today. I'm not hearing from the residents I represent that they want it downtown today. I think there are people that want it downtown, but that's just not what I'm hearing. And it is each of our jobs to take in input and decide what you think the majority opinion is. I don't know what to say. I mean, shopkeepers, we had one here two weeks ago that really tried hard not to say, I really don't want it downtown, but effectively said, put it downtown, but not near me. That's what they're saying. So let's just stop wasting time and get to the point. I think the Ward Five councillor made a great point. You're being given an opportunity to say yes here, not to say no. You're saying yes to marijuana in Newburyport right now, here tonight, and if you vote no, you're passing up on that opportunity. My last point is, just to expound a little bit, Ward Two councillor hit it, but the concept of an overlay district and the discussion of individual vacancies makes me desperately uncomfortable. That's not what zoning is to me. We don't decide which storefronts are going to have which item in them, and we shouldn't be even talking about that, in my opinion. And when I hear overlay district, at least as I'm familiar with them, to me, it sounds like it, you know, using common sense could be open for a challenge if you're going to just circle, because I had this discussion with the Planning Director and said, you know, if you arbitrarily circle things and you say, I want to put it here and here, but not there, and they're not differentiable, and that's what is important about this plan, is this is not arbitrary. This is based on specific, and as you said, we have flexibility with the buffer zones, and this takes advantage of that. This isn't just like, we just drew a funny circle here. This is a product of some work and to try and avoid the residential areas and keep a corner, not to mention that this area behind it particularly has been rezoned into 40R. So again, you have an opportunity here to say yes. I think I've touched upon the ones that I wanted to, but I just, if you want to speak, just, do you want it downtown or not? I mean, let's just have, that's the core question, right? I mean, that's what it's boiling down to. My answer is no, and let's get it somewhere so we can move on where we agree on it.
Councillor Khan.
Thank you. Yes, I think downtown is a very viable location. I'll answer that. And again, this is not, I'm not trying to prevent us moving forward. I actually am really trying to look as forward as I can, and again, emphasizing there's only going to be two facilities in Newburyport. Only two, okay? So what does that mean? That means by identifying locations, we could really dictate the type of business that comes. I'll say it straight up. I talked to some of the business owners. Somebody said, well, yeah, if it's like a liquor store that's maybe over the bridge, and I forgot the name, I don't drink, so I don't know the name of the liquor store, she mentioned one, if it's like that, no, I don't want it. But if it's like Grand Trunk with some wine and maybe Learys, I would love that. You know, so again, we are really dictating the type of business when we think about where to put it. So yes, downtown has some special permits and they have special requirements in our downtown business district. So yeah, I'm going to say it bluntly, we only get two, and I think we should be smart about where we put it so that we can have a business that will kind of align with what type of retail business we want to bring to Newburyport.
Councillor Tantar.
I've been holding back, I'm really between and betwixt on this one. And so I know a lot of people are urging that we vote right away. I actually am a little sensitive to what Mr. Fitzsimmons said, is that, you know, we have not received the guidance from the Planning Department. There has not been that full study that we anticipated when we did the moratorium. And we do have more time, all right? Having said that, you know, I did attend the Plan Development Committee meetings, I did attend the Planning Board meeting. You know, and the first meeting, I did find compelling the argument to compromise. And then I went to the Planning Board meeting and I found the arguments by the members of the Planning Board to be relatively compelling. And so I want to tell you why I'm between and betwixt on this in considering traffic circle versus downtown. I think the strong point, and I'm going to contrast them and just show you, I think the strong point for the traffic circle is, is the parking and congestion issue, all right? If this is indeed a destination-type business predominantly, then downtown, that poses a problem, all right? I match that against what the at-large counselor said, which is the safety issue. I think downtown, actually, there can be more control, all right? So I see pluses and minuses, all right? I think the available parking around the traffic circle is a plus for that thing. A minus is that I think it is a little less, less safe, all right? A little less protected, because it is away from the downtown where there's more activity. It's like destination, if it is a destination business, I think that that's a strong argument for putting it where there's parking. I counted that with the economic vitality to the downtown area, the threat that downtown retail businesses face from Amazon, from online ordering, and not so much in the summer. We have a pretty active downtown in the summer, but, but my understanding in talking to retailers is they're hurting in terms of, of, of competing with online services. I hear the restaurants and the bars have done very well, but perhaps the retail shops have not. So I think it helps especially, and I've said this before, January to April or so, to have something else to draw people downtown. Finally, I think the strong argument for the traffic circle is caution. It's a, it's a, it's a new use. We don't have experience with it, so therefore try it on one small basis. And I counted that with the revenue argument, all right? That, that we may miss an opportunity to get revenue that would assist us. I did some research, and most of the economic research seems to be based in Colorado. I think Crystal Springs, very conservative community, voted against having marijuana in their community. The mayor, city councilors all said, very conservative, we didn't want it here. And they said, we made a mistake. Our money is going to other communities. I would love that, that we're seeing other communities fix their roads and their sidewalks and their schools, and we don't have the money, so they're reconsidering, all right? And, and I, you know, my concern, I mean, again, I get the caution, right? But the other side of that is, we might miss out, and we might miss out on some revenue. So at this point, I'm leaning for two reasons, essentially for voting two in the amendment. One, because I think we may then be forced to have to spend more time and get some more information, which I don't mind doing. And secondly, I'm leaning a little bit toward including downtown at this point.
Further discussion. Counsel Earl's.
All right. As a sponsor of the ordinance, I'd be remiss not to stand up and speak a bit. I'm not, I'm trying not to repeat, I may, might be hammering home some points. The Planning Board was, are made up of people who are chosen by the mayor's office and confirmed by us, every single one of them. They were unanimous in saying they don't see why, unanimous in saying they don't see why it cannot go throughout the whole city where there's retail. We choose for some reason not to listen to that. Okay, so let's go to the marshal. The marshal was asked, where would you put it if we were to have it? And the marshal said, well, we put it where retail is, Story Ave. We're not listening to that either, okay? Let's go to the planner. The planner has said, we're probably picking too small of an area, we're opening up for a lawsuit. Do we listen to that? No. We listen to, well, not to be offensive, we listen to our feelings. We're not listening to professionals that we have in this city, that we, that I think we count on for a little bit. We talk about the restrictions. Well, these restrictions came about because the legislator sat there and said to the pro-cannabis people, we're going to do this to you, and they said, okay, we'll take it. You can advertise it, we'll take it. You can have anything on your trucks, we'll take it. You have, you cannot hire anybody who has a criminal record, we'll take it. They kept taking everything, so the final legislator said, we have nothing else, we have nothing else. That's why the restrictions are in place. So it's not playing both ways, it's that's why they're in place. Finally, I went to all my neighbors, and maybe this is an anomaly, but all my neighbors saying, why is this even a battle? This is ridiculous. And I'm not going to lie, probably two of my neighbors, I didn't get to talk to them about. But when you say it's 50%, not even close, they're coming in saying, what are you even arguing about? So there are some pockets in the city, I live in the South End, maybe it's an anomaly, but they're coming to me saying, why are we arguing about this?
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion. I think almost everyone has spoken.
Can I make one more point?
I have not yet, I was going to step down, but Counsel Jenta, would you make your point first, and then I must hand the gavel.
I just want to make a quick point on this. There's obviously some passion here from folks for downtown. Voting for this is not a no on downtown. I want people to understand that. If this works out well, downtown could be next. But the point is, is that to vote this down because it's not downtown would make a mistake. We bind ourselves all up, when in fact, voting yes to get one spot going doesn't automatically mean that downtown's not going to happen. I just want people to really think about that.
Counsel Vogel.
Real quick. Right, we're not only talking about downtown and the traffic circle, we're talking about all retail areas. This is an amendment to the all retail area, and take striking downtown and striking the Story Avenue area, which I certainly respect the position as the Ward Five Counselor, absolutely. You don't want it there, your constituents voted no, I get it. But it's not just downtown that we're talking about, we're talking about all retail business areas.
Counsel Ogilvy.
Yeah, that raises a point of order. I'm trying to understand, so the committee amended it in committee, and we brought it out, and so the, the motion on the floor is to approve as amended. So I want to be clear, if it fails, that probably means someone has to introduce a new ordinance. Doesn't mean they can't, I'm just saying you have to realize, you have to start over. Okay.
Thank you. Counsel Zied.
Yeah, when we're playing ping pong, it's fun. So my last point is, if the economics, and this is the gold rush, right? This is my have it both ways problem. If it's the gold rush, why would you say no to an opportunity to say yes to retail marijuana in Newburyport tonight? That's all. Rhetorical question.
All right. I hope we don't get too rhetorical or semantic here. Let's, Counsel Khan, and then I'm going to hand the gavel to someone else and step down and say my piece.
Thank you, I am going to answer that, because, because of the fact we only get two. And this is really, I see this as our opportunity, I don't see us bringing this up again, like in the next month or so. So I keep hearing that, you know, oh, well, this doesn't mean it's done, that, you know, we could add downtown, because this is really kind of our test. And I really want to say that, that we're not in this business, why, I didn't think zoning was your test the whole time, when we are clearly hearing different arguments about it. So I almost feel like one of the reasons why I'm hoping we can step back and really think about the type of facilities we're going to give two licenses to. Again, I really want everyone to hear that, two licenses. We should be really more open to looking at, at it holistically, and not just say, we could keep moving on, you know, we do the business, the rotary, and then we come back here again and debate the next location. And I don't see it that way, because I feel like we didn't really think adequately on those two businesses and what type of businesses we could, we could bring in.
If I may step down from the chair, I'd like to address the council as well. Hand the gavel to Counsel O'Brien, would you mind?
I don't want it, oh, thank you.
Counsel Earl's. No, although he's not here, I'll sit in his seat.
Thank you, Counsel. I have to say that in my years in the council, there have been very few matters that have required this much deliberation and this much thought on the part of the members. There have been some. And there have been almost none that requires such a leap of faith, because this is a new world for us. It's something unique. We haven't dealt with this particular issue. And I have to go back, you know, for our entire lives, we've been told that marijuana is the, the end of our, of our sentient lives, you know, that it's going to scramble our brains. Remember those, those ads on TV? Here's your brain, it's an egg, and then here's your egg, here's your brain on drugs, and the egg is fried and scrambled, and, you know, they made their point. It, by the way, was a failure in terms of moving the needle in public opinion. So I'm like you. We started from scratch. Thank you, Counsel Shand, for, for taking the initial lumps on this. I have to continue to credit you with that, because you took it on the chin right from the start. But then other members pitched in and got involved, and I credit each of you for, in a conscientious manner, doing the research that you thought you needed. And I, before I'm done here, I want to remind us, there are 10 of us, eight have to vote in favor of a proposal if it's going to require zoning, but I think you all knew that. But I wanted to stand up, and because this is a controversial issue, I wanted people who would disagree with my position to at least have, have a reason for throwing rocks and bottles at my house when we're done tonight. I'll tell you how I came to where I am. I voted against the initial ballot question, for the simple reason that I don't think our society needs any more intoxication. It's as plain and simple as that. But I acknowledge the fact that if you want to smoke weed, if you want to consume cannabis, there's a pretty ready supply out there. It's illegal, or it has been, now it's changing. So I don't know that the number of people who are going to end up consuming cannabis is going to change, you know? My crystal ball's no clearer than, than any of you. I am concerned, as, as an educator, about the potential message we're giving kids. But the people of Newburyport told us what they wanted, and we have to act on that knowledge. We don't really have much of a choice. So how do I do my research? One of the things I did most recently was, over the past five, six days, I visited Boulder, Colorado. Now, I don't want you to think I went out there for the express purpose of sampling their wares and seeing how they do this. No, I was out there for a wedding. But I did take advantage of the opportunity to do some research. No, not that either. But I did go into facilities, into places, and looked in the papers, and talked to some of my in-laws and people who lived out there, and asked their impressions. And what they did was confirm some things and kind of disabused me of some notions that I had going out there. Let me say a couple of things first. One, I believe the way Counsel Ogilvy has characterized this kind of activity is pretty accurate, that this is not part of a, a shopping experience in most people's minds out there. It's a lot like a liquor store, which confirmed what, the prejudice that I held going out there. That is, people go in, they buy their product, they get in cars, they drive away, sat out in the parking lot for about an hour and watched. They weren't doing anything else. They might have gone across the street for a splash of gas in their tank, but that was about it. They wanted to go, pick something up, and move on with their lives. They weren't walking up the street with a shopping bag, sampling something in this store, and feeling the fabric on a piece of clothing, or seeing how it fit, and going to the next door and seeing if they liked those gifts for, for grandma for the holidays, or, or then going to the pop shop and see what they might want to take home that night. No, that wasn't what they were doing. They went for a specific purpose, as generally people do in liquor stores, which means you need a lot of parking around it for quick stops, and then let them move on, which argues to me that the more distant retail areas, and, excuse me, Counsel, Story Avenue included, or the traffic circle area made sense. And obviously, I expressed that preference earlier. The other thing that, that impressed me was this. It's pretty boring. It's not the end of civilization. I, I hope we're not making too much of this. I, yeah, I don't think we need it, but if we do something, I think we start with the baby steps. And, and that argues in favor of the, the item that's come out of committee, to me. What I saw was something, it's kind of like a cross between a bank, because of security, and a jewelry store. Lots of little things, very packaged, and available like you'd find on the shelves. They don't have to be refrigerated, they don't have to be stored in special ways, they just have to be presented in a certain way. And there's the security overlay, you have to identify yourself and that sort of thing, show that you're of a legal age. And luckily, I, you know, passed the bar there. So I'm willing to vote for the item that's before us tonight as a baby step, as a start. And I'm not entirely comfortable with the idea of our central business district downtown as a destination, because I think the patterns of use, the quick stop, a purchase, hop back in your car and go away, is going to potentially mean that people need a different type of parking situation. And that anybody who parks in the Green Street Lot, for example, displaces a shopper who might stop in three, or four, or five different locations, and maybe stop for a glass of wine or a plate before they go home. A different kind of experience. So I was surprised to see the Planning Board not acknowledge the distinction that I'm trying to make, and that is, that this would be a different kind of use, a pattern of use that is inconsistent with our downtown, but more consistent with the distant retail areas of our city. That's where I am. We have something else in the backs of our minds, and that is, well, we could hunt on this, throw it back to the voters, and I'm opposed to that. They didn't elect us to play with our food. They made a decision. They said, now figure out how. And that's what the zoning amendment would do. It would, it would codify our best attempt to do it somehow, in a way that, that reflects our collective knowledge and our conscientious effort to represent their best interests. That's it.
You guys stay there.
Thank you, Counsel. Move the question. If there's no other, could you hold, Counsel Earl's, you moved a question?
Yes, second.
Seconded by Counsel O'Brien. We'll take a roll call on this matter.
And that is the amended retail marijuana zoning ordinance that has come out of the committee on Planning and Development.
Counsel Shand.
Yes.
Counsel Tanta.
No.
Counsel Vogel.
No.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin recused himself. Counsel Earl's.
No.
It's all over.
Counsel Ogilvy.
Yes.
Counsel Junta.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
No.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel O'Connell.
Yes.
It fails.
It fails.
It fails.
What a waste of time.
Is there anything else to come out of Planning and Development? Next.
Let's do some cleanup.
While people are shuffling out of the room. Oh, excuse me, Counsel, let's wait for Counsel Devlin to come back into the room. He's recused on all, or just this one?
Are you going to bring out the marijuana legislation?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. We'll hold on him, then.
Okay.
He gets to pass for him.
Okay, so a motion to remove collectively Communication 36, which is dated April 30th. That was the memorandum from the Planning Department on retail sales. And then also Ordinance 16, which was an earlier draft that I think was sponsored by Counsel O'Connell, which is now superseded. And then Communication 42, which is dated May 14th, which was a letter from Grace Connolly about the CCC's regs. Those are the three I'd like to remove at this time.
Can we do them again?
Communication 36, Ordinance 16, and Communication 42.
Yeah, in the, in the list of items in the cover page, it's 3, 4, 5. 3, 4, 5. So Communication 36, dated April 30th, which is a memo from Andy Port. Ordinance 16, which was introduced in April to get the ball rolling, and we're, that's like ancient history now. And then Communication 42, which was a letter from Attorney Grace Connolly about the CCC regs, and it was in regard to the industrial part. Got that?
Yep, thank you. Okay, so the motion is to remove all of these items from committee, all those in, discussion first. There are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they're all out.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Discussion. Counsel Zied.
Yeah, I, of course, support receiving and filing. I, I just had a question, since we're on the topic, so the Newburyport City Council just said no to retail marijuana, so let's just be clear on what just happened. So just because it's germane to this discussion with a little bit of latitude, a zoning amendment in Massachusetts cannot come back after failing for, I believe, is it, two years? So I just want us to be cognizant of that, that the Newburyport City Council just said no to retail marijuana, and a zoning amendment cannot come back on that same, I don't, I'm not a fully well-versed, I look to you. So that's my, that's my comment, and let's receive and file these. I'm just, the reason I receive and file these is just to speak more directly to the topic is, I don't don't know what else we need to talk about with marijuana, so if somebody's going to bring something in, I hope it's super new and novel and interesting, because we spent a lot of time on this just to have a nail.
Further discussion. We'll take a roll call on this. The items to receive and file, the items remaining in Planning and Development.
Counselor Sean?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Earle?
Yes.
Counselor Aigman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
No.
Passes.
That's the result?
Eight ayes.
Okay. Receiving files.
Okay, next, why don't we return from exile Counselor Devlin?
Yeah.
Now go get them.
There are no further marijuana-related items coming out, Counselor?
No, we're fresh out.
Okay.
We've disposed of all of them.
Two years.
Counselor, do you have... What's your gonna call it, all these to come out?
No, not all of them. I'm gonna keep some.
I was just thinking about a gentleman who's been here for public safety, and I don't want him here at 12 o'clock. He came in to speak to him on a road break, so I don't want to be here till 12 o'clock if you're gonna be long.
No, we're almost done. Marijuana was the big show.
Thank you. Because it'll be time for the marathon, and we'll still be here.
Yeah, I got you. Good point. Mr.?
Welcome back, Counselor.
The Counselor Aigman?
Yeah, Mr. President, may I please take out Order 49, July 16th, 18th, Preservation Restriction for 50 to 58 Middle Street.
Second. Order 49?
That's the big one.
Take it out of committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No, it's out?
Motion to refer to the city solicitor to make mandatory the six items of work listed on page... Well, there's no page number, I think it's page two. Sorry. I'll explain.
Okay, the motion is to refer this to the solicitor for opinion and analysis. Counselor Aigman?
Yeah, I don't think we need to see this again, so I guess in the same motion, we can approve subject... I should have said, sorry, it's been already been a long night, subject to the city solicitor fixing this, because there's a whereas clause where it lists six things that have to be done to the building in order to make it historic, but the way the document is written is they wouldn't have to do those, and they would be preserving the non-fixed building. It's just a logical problem. So the city solicitor needs to work on this to make sure that the six items that are listed about fixing the property and making it consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards happens, and then the preservation restriction is put on. And with that, I would urge you to vote for it, and we never have to look at this again, and it doesn't have to be in the packet again.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove Order 53, Preservation Restriction for 5 Mosley Ave.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion to approve, second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. We couldn't find any flies.
On this one, so we recommended unanimously to recommend approval, so please approve. Further discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
That was Order 53.
That was 53, right?
Yep, 53. The only other item is just informational. I don't expect us to act, and it's been a long night already. That's Order 24, Special Act to Dissolve Newburyport Redevelopment Authority. I guess motion to remove it, so we can talk about it.
Second.
Moved and seconded, removed from committee. Communication, you said, ordinance, Order 24. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Yes, just informationally, you know, the train's kind of leaving the station on this, just so everybody knows. So we spent all that time doing our resolution on how we thought we would settle things on the central waterfront, but what's really happening is the NRA is gonna put out RFPs... Sorry, an RFP for the Custom House, but, you know, it's kind of a farce, because there's only gonna be one bidder. It's written so that only the Custom House can get it. And, you know, we may not like how that ends up, and it's certainly not consistent with our resolution last year, if we care. I just want to flag it. And then similarly, they're going ahead on transferring the land to the Waterfront Trust, but they're not really... They're not gonna do any changes to the Waterfront Trust documents. Again, if we don't care, that's fine, but I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it up, you know? So this is kind of our chance, snooze or lose. What's our standing? Well, you know, we have a colorable litigation claim, but I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying, you know, pay attention, make sure it's going the way you want. Again, we voted unanimously on that thing last year, and it's not really following that. That's all I wanted to say.
Further discussion. Counselor Zee?
Yeah, so I had some comments for the Custom House, which we chose to table, but I care a lot about this. I spend a lot of time, and I care very deeply about what the outcome of this is, and I think it has deep implications for downtown, for Newburyport, for what the waterfront's gonna be, for parking, for finances. I mean, you... There's a reason it's been argued about for 40 years. It's not just by chance. And I'm actually, I use the same word again, incredulous. I just cannot believe what I'm seeing. After two years of the ad hoc and working very hard with all the parties at the table, trying to come up with a compromise, a unanimous vote by the city council, that was just last year, I just... I can't believe it. I can't believe that anybody would sanction giving away public land to a private entity, no matter how noble that private entity's cause may be. I just literally cannot believe it. And I want to say, so the mayor, in her update, or memo, I think it was, said, "There'll be other forms of redress if you're unhappy with what the NRA is doing, you'll find something else." There may be litigation options, but the city council has been pretty consistent. We said no to the two NRA appointees, not once, but twice. So there's a theme here, where we have to try again to see if we get the right answer the second time. Well, we said no twice. So I'm just gonna take this opportunity to ask the mayor, if she does not agree with the land transfer that's happening, to bring us two new appointees to the NRA, because those folks are in holdover status, who will not vote to give away city land, so that we... And I am the person who said I would not confirm anybody new to the NRA, but this is how desperate I am now, is I don't want to see city land lost, and 100 years from now, when somebody proposes to build condos on the lawn behind the Custom House, I don't want my name anywhere near it. That's as clear and as present as it can be. I may not be a lawyer, I may not be the land use expert, but I know damn sure, when you go to court, the first thing that matters is whose name is on the deed, not what the deed restrictions are, the covenants, an RFP that had a basic right of reversion in it, which could end up resulting in mortgage land coming back to the city. I mean, this is one of those things where I just keep shaking my head and I can't figure it out. So what can the city council do? Well, we can go the litigation route. We tried saying no to the appointees, but I don't think it's fair to say that there'll be other forms of redress. The mayor wants to bring us two new appointees, who value the public land enough not to give it away, and recognize that we could achieve the same goals, because I certainly am a supporter of the Custom House, through a 99-year lease for a lousy $1 a year on very, very valuable property on the waterfront, because to date, no one has presented to me an argument why giving them the land somehow achieves the taxpayer and residents' goals any better than giving them the same kind of sweetheart deal we have at the Firehouse, which I have no problem with, and the council even approved several years ago, acting as effectively as the bank. We are the cosigners for the loan they took. What's wrong with that? Seems like it would so win-win for everybody. And then we can, you know, we can support them, but we can protect the residents, and as it was brought up at the last meeting, the residents, not to mention, have poured a lot of money into that building. So this isn't just some private entity that owes nothing to the residents of Newburyport. I just don't get it. So I didn't know when I was gonna say this, I thought about saying this with the Custom House, but there you have it. Let's see what happens, because I don't know what else we can do.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye? There's no action. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Nothing further tonight.
Nothing further. All right. So that is just informational, is what you're saying? Okay. No action required. Correct. General Gaveman, my president of cities. Okay, where are we now? Public safety.
Motion to remove, for the sake of my good friend, Amanda Moore, who has now sat through all of this, Communication 78 from 8/27/2018. Is that greatest name ever submitted to this since I've been on this? Party Legis 1768, Central Congregational Church.
Seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Approved. Seconded. Discussion. Counselor Devlin?
If I may, this is recommended to come out for recommended approval, 2 to nothing. I had a good conversation with Amanda. They are... We asked... I almost asked, had you done this before, but this is their one and only 250th anniversary, so that is not likely. They are taking... They want to use the park outside here, Brown Square, from the statue over to Titcomb. They have asked for road closure, but it's not really a road closure, they just want to put some cones down, because they're gonna be using the bathrooms in the church, and they're gonna have a detail officer there to make sure people can cross safely. They have notified there are butters, what was happening. The garrison had just one, wanted to make sure the road was accessible, because they have a party, wedding party coming in, and then...
Mission Oak.
Yeah, Mission Oak. It's still the Mission Oak, yes. The Mission Oak had a similar question, because they have somebody, wedding reception coming in. They're satisfied. The only other interesting part to this is they want to temporarily close some of the parking spaces from the monument over on Green Street, because that's where the food trucks and service providers are gonna go. Everybody signed off on this. Richard Jones was here and just said that that has happened before, and that they close it off. We give them permission, and they close it off. And they coordinate with the parking clerk and the marshal. Other than that, it sounds like there is some folk music, colonial chamber music, a singing-along, no loud instruments, and there's a gospel and kids choir. And it'll all be over by... Amanda, was it 7 o'clock?
Seven.
7 o'clock. And she is here, the event would be 9:15, so I asked her to come, just in case anybody had any questions. She got an education, it sounds like. That's nothing further.
If we can accommodate bare-naked ladies, we can certainly accommodate a celebration of 1768. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good party.
Thank you, Amanda. Very nice talking.
Anything else from public safety, Counselor?
Yeah, let's give, before maybe Tom gets too cranky, it's Communication 20, Motion to Remove Communication 20 from 3/12/2018, the Newburyport Half Marathon.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Don't sound cranky, I want to help the guy out.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Devlin?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is the Newburyport Half Marathon. He came to us several months ago. This is their eighth time doing this here. Eli Baylen is actually present here in the audience. They have all their sign-offs, they have the insurance, the map. The police, they have 20 police details with also, it spreads throughout the course. They do have some road closures along the course, as they've had in the past, and they do have the after-party in the Harbor Masters parking area, for which they've gotten a liquor license, and the one-day license requirement is to enclose it. He notifies a butters about a week to two weeks ahead of time, tries to notify all the butters around the road closures, but we've also asked him to notify the, as many people in the Ward 3 area from Merrimack up to High that would be affected by parking. At the committee meeting, the Ward 6 counselor also voiced some complaints about this race from his constituents delaying their ability to get out of their streets when the race is running by. So he's... Mr. Baylen and his crew have agreed to try to send out as many butters, to paper the Turkey Hill area and other parts of Ward 6 that are affected, including the timeline, but also, they're gonna publish that in the paper. So there's a race timeline that tells you when runners, you know, roughly will be at your street and might cause you problems from getting out, and he's gonna have that published in the paper, which was a suggestion of the Ward 6 counselor as well. In response to the reason we're acting on this so far after our initial meeting on this, the Ward 3 counselor had some issues from residents about people parking in front of their driveways, people, you know, perhaps urinating or changing in their bushes in front of their houses, and Mr. Baylen had gone to try to see if he could move it and run it out of Riverwalk. He met with Lieutenant Samaskos on a number of occasions and couldn't, or talked to him, and they just couldn't, he didn't like the new racecourse there. I then suggest that he go back and talk to the Ward 3 counselor, and after our experience with satellite parking at the bare-naked ladies, he's gonna arrange to have satellite parking, he's gonna make it part of his promotional package. That's a condition of, you know, that would be a condition of our approval, and it was a condition of my approval, you know, one-to-one recommendation. The Ward 6 counselor just couldn't vote for it, recommend approval, but I think it's fair to say was satisfied, was happy with the efforts that Mr. Baylen was ready to make. I will say this about Eli, I've known him since he started coming to the Liquor Commission, and he has been one of the most amenable applicants we've had to try to solve problems, sometimes so much, though, that he's trying to oversolve the problems, and I'm like, "Eli, be quiet, you know, you've got this approval." So much so, Brad Duffin, the chair of the License Commission, used to throw, it seemed a new requirement on him each time he came, and Brad and I and a couple others would go down and kind of check on the race after, you know, after they were done. And, you know, again, I see a lot of these runners in downtown on the day of the race, after the race, because it's a destination event. It is a qualifier for a half marathon, it's a destination event. Mr. Baylen has said the night before is even more impact, because they come up and pick up their packages, and then you can see people with the racebag all over the city, and they're coming from long distances. So I think it's a good economic event for our city as well. But certainly, we're all here to answer any questions, but it was one-to-one out of committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor O'Brien?
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, I was the one, I was the one who, like Counselor Devlin said, because the timeline for going through Ward 6 is from 9:10 to 10:30, and a lot of people had complaints last year, trying to get out of their houses to go to church or go out to breakfast, but, you know, I was hoping the Daily News would stay here, I had the sheet ready to give to him, but he's long gone, hard to find, so, but hopefully you can put this listing, because this would be very helpful to residents. If this could get them paid, but no residents should have any complaints. You've done a great job, I appreciate it.
It's actually good news to come to our research, Devlin. Yeah, the record is...
You can speak from where you are, that's all right. You're just speaking to the 10.
Thank you very much also for all the kind words you've said, I appreciate that. So short answers, yes, absolutely happy to do that.
Uh, thank you for handing that to him because, and you have to update it a little bit, um, because we're going to change 15-minute window, um, at the start, so we'll give him updated for it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Further questions from the counselors? Counselor Shand.
Just want to thank you for volunteering to do the satellite parking. That is most appreciated for the Ward Three folks, so. And he did call me while he was at the Spinway Park Pearl Jam concert, so he definitely wouldn't bother to be on.
Thank you. Further questions from counselors? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
One no.
Uh, motion...
Is there anything else?
Motion to remove Communication 47, collectively 47 and 47A, uh, Jeannie Geiger 27th Annual Walk Against Violence.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of removing these items from committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See, they're out.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor Devlin.
All right, I'll make this one short. This is the 27th time they've been doing this. Uh, if you've ever participated in it, it's a great, well-run event, um, and for a really good cause. Uh, the only, uh, thing is they came to us earlier for October 7th, realized it was Columbus Day, so then they came in later and, and submitted, uh, papers to change it to October 14th. It came out of committee with a recommendation to approve, two to nothing.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Anything else, Counselor?
Yes, motion to remove, uh, Order 51, uh, 8/13/18, restricted parking Fair Street, along Fair Street.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion to remove.
Motion to approve.
Approve.
Yeah, already did that. Thank you.
Was there a second?
Second. Counselor Zee, seconded. Discussion, Counselor Devlin.
It's pretty self-explanatory from the diagram. Yeah, the state law requires, uh, that much space to be, you know, non, you know, uh, not occupied by parking, uh, to put a crosswalk for a crosswalk, and, uh, that's, there is a crosswalk going in there, and so they need to remove a couple parking spaces submitted by the Ward Two counselor for his ward, and, uh, it was recommended two to nothing.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is done. Anything else?
Uh, yes. Motion to remove, which one is this? Um, Communication 72, 8/13/18, uh, the Challenge 5K Freedom Run.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Moved and seconded by Counselor Tontar. Counselor Devlin.
This, uh, was, uh, recommended for approval, um, uh, two to nothing. It was, uh, oops, I had the wrong person on here that I talked to. I had a good conversation with, uh, Steven Santos. It's an interesting one. This is to benefit, um, a long-term residential treatment facility for 15 to 21-year-olds in Dorchester. I asked him how he had thought about, uh, doing this. This is their first time doing it in Newburyport. He said they've done some work up here with other residential and non-residential treatment facilities, um, done some, some, uh, uh, community outreach here, and they were, uh, you know, kind of blown away by the reception that they got here. Uh, it's also a good community to, and known as a good community to hold a race in, and a very generous community, so I thought that was good. Uh, Mr. Santos had just been before the Newbury Board of Selectmen because this runs through, uh, Newbury as well, and, uh, he told his story there. I told him he didn't need to come and tell us, but I would repeat it, that he benefited from the long-term residential treatment like this when he was a youth to help him break his, uh, alcohol and drug addiction, and, uh, that's where all this money is going to. Um, there, it's a certified 5K. They have a race, uh, management company running it. Uh, they have all their sign-offs. They've met with, uh, Lieutenant Samasco. Um, Lieutenant Samasco is not sure he's, they need a detail, but, but, uh, if they do, they're going to take one. Newbury is having them have one. Um, so this is recommended two to nothing.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Zee.
So, uh, I think I have the right one in front of me here. Can I just have the order number, the communication number? Was it 72?
72.
Yeah, so just being the insurance certificate guy, it looks like they expire on 9/118, so if we could make contingent upon getting an updated certificate that's valid through the race date, that would be appreciated. That's an amendment.
Second. Is that a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Is that how it's been proposed? Counselor Zee?
Yes, it is a friendly amendment, yes.
Accepted?
Yes.
Very well.
Everyone's friends.
So we have the opportunity to, uh, vote on the matter as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Counselor, anything else?
Uh, yes. Motion to remove, uh, maybe this is what the fire chief is here for, uh, Order Number 47, 716, 2018, no parking, Greenleaf at Auburn.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Removed from committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor Devlin.
Yes, so this dates back to the prior, uh, Public Safety Chair. There's, um, barrels out on, um, uh, the Mall, um, on Green, Greenleaf Street, uh, where the road narrows to such an extent that when you put car, parked cars there, it is very difficult to, almost impossible for the emergency vehicles from the fire station to get through there. So, uh, the former Public Safety Chair was going to, um, file something to put permanent no parking there, which has been the temporary case now for probably about a year. Uh, then the incoming Public Safety Chair was asked to do it, and he, um, forgot it, and then, uh, ably picked up by the new Ward Three counselor, and she filed it, and this was recommended two to nothing. Uh, coming out of committee.
And thank you for the confession, Counselor. It's good for the soul. Chief, do you want to comment on this? You don't have to.
I think it was pretty well captured. Uh, we're going to take somebody head on if we allow parking on that sharp corner going out toward, uh, High Street. This is a dangerous situation that was recognized right away, and thanks for taking it up.
Thank you. Further discussion. Questions from the counselors? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done. It is done.
Uh, motion to remove Communication 74 from 8/13/18, Walk For Our Poor.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of removing this from committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Moved and seconded by Counselor Tontar. Counselor Devlin.
Uh, yes, uh, I had a good conversation with, uh, Kathleen Williamson, who at first thought I was a telemarketer and was ready to bark me off the telephone, um, but, uh, this is the, uh, she couldn't quite remember, but it's the seventh or the eighth annual, uh, St. Vincent de Paul, uh, walk. It's usually around the parish, but some elderly, um, I can't help but saying this, but some elderly, uh, parishioners had said that the sidewalks were in such bad condition on the route that they took, that they would prefer to do it on the rail trail. So yes, now we have the experience where the rail trail is in better shape than our sidewalks, but, um, the, uh, so they've moved it to the rail trail. They've never had any complaints. The only thing that happens at the registration, there's a tent, and they use a bullhorn for a few minutes to get everybody together before they start walking to take a picture. Um, and she says they're very compliant Catholics, and they all get aligned when the priest tells them to, so it works out. At the end, they get a water at the Harbor Masters Building, then they walk back and they get a snack and they go home. There's no music, about 100 people. It came out two to nothing.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is done.
All right, did this purpose so that, uh, the Counselor Igerman...
Oh, yeah, I have to accuse myself on 73.
Motion to remove Communication 73, 8/13/18, Bartlett Mall Day.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded by, believe by Counselor Junta, or I heard this side of the table.
Counselor Zee.
It's a toss-up. Okay.
Had a good conversation... Had a good conversation with a wonderful lady named Andrea Igerman, um, they, who was the, the host of this, this, um, interesting event. Um, last, this is one of the cool things about being Public Safety Chair, you really find out some, there's some cool stuff going on here. Uh, last year was their first year, but they didn't have any complaints. It is a, they're trying to highlight the historical aspects of the Bartlett Mall, um, and, you know, show people, you know, how, how much of a special place it is. So there's five areas, um, that have placards there. I think actually some of the placards are up right now. Uh, the courthouse is one of them, historical area. There'll be somebody there to talk about the historical nature of it. The doors will be open so people can take a tour of it. The Washington Monument, uh, which is one of the only standing monuments of Washington who's not, when he's not on a horse. Uh, my kid's favorite, the World War One, uh, gun, uh, you know, cannon. I, I actually, there's a millstone there that I thought would be pretty cool, but, uh, you know, that's not one of them. There's also used to be a rope walk. Uh, they have food, they have beer in an enclosed area, they have their one-day liquor license, uh, they have music, more along the lines of the antique music, maybe it's the same musicians. Uh, it goes from 11 to 2:00 PM, and it was recommended two to nothing.
I'm sure the reference to antique music didn't include the chronological age of the musicians.
Could be.
Might be. All right. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, Sharif, are we okay if that other one doesn't come out?
Someone...
Here he is. Thank you.
Nothing further.
Nothing further. Thank you. Public Utilities.
63. Communication 63.
Are you, you wanted to know?
Okay. Yeah, I'm, sorry.
Okay. Counselor Devlin.
Motion to remove Communication 63. I was just going to let it ride to the next hearing.
Seconded by Counselor Zee. Do all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to receive and file.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor Devlin.
Uh, it was, the motion to receive and file was, uh, Larry, were you there for that one?
No.
Two to nothing, because we did this two meetings ago. Okay. Two to nothing. The Ward Six counselor was there, and myself, after we got this, both of us had looked at the, uh, the parking around that area. Uh, neither one of us could see a problem.
I went there 18 times, so...
Yeah, I went there a variety of times, and none of us could see, really see a problem. It's one of those things where you don't want to address a specific complaint by a few residents with an overbroad brush, um, so we voted to receive and file.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Motion to remove Appointment Number 44, Roger E. Jones to the Water Sewer Commission.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of removing Appointment 44? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor Zee.
So, um, I had a nice conversation with Mr. Jones today, um, so just to give you a little bit of background, if you don't know him, he's a registered professional engineer. He is, has been serving on, uh, the Water/Sewer Commission for 10 years. He actually started when the Water and Sewer Commissions were separate and has stayed on. Um, he's a retiree of GE and is a mechanical engineer. Um, I personally have worked with, with Roger, um, during the wastewater treatment facility upgrades in particular, amongst other things, and, um, I think he's a great candidate for the Water/Sewer Commission, and, and he was not able to attend tonight, but we both talked at length about the, uh, getting some more meetings together between the Water/Sewer Commission and particularly the Public Utilities Committee. I think it's a great idea, and so hopefully we'll take that up, um, particularly with stormwater coming around the bend, so ask for your support on, on it for his appointment. Thank you.
You admitted his role on the building committee of the high school.
Yes, I forgot. My apologies. He said he served on, with it, with you.
One of the unsung heroes.
Sorry. Editorial comment. Excuse me. Try and get the words, so, yes.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, it's a second roll, second...
Counselor Shand.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Igerman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
So voted.
Anything else?
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Order 55, uh, grant of easement to the Mass Electric Company, please.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor Zee.
As amended in committee. So let me just, so let me give you a little bit of background on this. Um, this easement, the reason for it to begin with is the new Graff Road lift station, which you'll probably recall from some deliberations, is nearing, uh, being ready to go online, and, um, in order for it to go online, I think it's probably would be a good thing if it had power. And so in order to have power, it needs to have this easement granted to, uh, essentially National Grid Mass Electric Company. And basically, Counselor Shand and I did a site visit today, and, um, just to really quickly, because I know it's late, we had an opportunity to tour both the old facility and the new facility, and the new facility's awesome. If you want to see somebody who's proud of their work, and rightfully so, contact Jamie, and he'll give you a tour of the new one. Um, so hats off to him and cheers for his work. Um, he deserves it. So anyways, um, back to the actual matter at hand. Um, in order to serve the new facility, there need to be, um, two telephone poles installed[1542.04] need to be two telephone poles installed and one transformer. And basically, the reason there are two poles is that one pole is going to go in, and then another one's going to come out eventually, so net-net, it's going to be one new pole. The reason that they've opted for this plan is that Jamie specifically wants to be able to flip, switch back and forth between the stations, so he wants to cut over, and should there be an issue with the new station or it doesn't go off without a hitch, switch, you know, basically switch right back to the old one. So, and I think a lot of our sewage passes through this lift station, a substantial amount percentage, so it's a really good idea to do it in a step fashion. So the amendment in committee is that you'll notice in the language of the easement, it says about the sixth line down, it says that, you know, it shalling... It... Lines to consist of, but not limited to, one pole, which may be erected at different times. So even though I've been assured that they're never going to want to install anything more than this one pole, these two poles and the transformer, I spoke to the city solicitor. I've spoken to staff, and what we've come up with is we'd like... The amendment in committee was we pass this amendment subject to the city solicitor, cleaning up the language to limit it to two... To no more than two poles and one transformer. And that way, 20 years from now, this doesn't get pulled back up, and they say, well, we can put as many poles, because it also says they can install it at different times, which is a very overly broad thing. So we opted not to edit the language ourselves so that staff can get this done, because this will likely be the last thing that is... They're waiting on to fire up the new station, and the old station is showing more signs of wear and age by the day, and it is a safety nightmare as we saw it today. So anyhow, that's the amendment, so it's subject to the city solicitor, cleaning up the language to limit it to no more than two poles and one transformer. And if there's any questions about the project, we looked at everything, so if you want to ask anything, feel free to, or if you want to ask a specific question. And the last thing I'll say is the location of the pole, one of them is right basically on New Pasture Road, so New Pasture is the corner where the new station is, Graff Road and New Pasture, and the other one is actually on our property, and that's also where the transformer will go. And so they're going to put one new pole on New Pasture. Here's the old pole, and then when the old station goes offline, that pole will be removed. And just for fun, we don't own the land that the old station was on. I didn't know this. We have an easement from Hartnett, so we will be demolishing that building and filling in the wet wells with dirt, and then, I don't know what happens after that, so... If I didn't give enough information, let me know.
Further discussion. Hearing none.
Uh, it's being an easement...
I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Igerman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
So voted.
Thank you. Rules Committee. Excuse me. Is there anything else, Counselor?
No, all set.
Rules Committee.
Oh, nothing at this time.
Good of the order. Counselor Zee.
Yeah, just a quick... Couple of quick things. First of all, my negative comments, so I can get those out. I... If anybody is still watching, I just have to say this. I truly feel like the Newburyport City Council let residents of Newburyport down. If you wanted marijuana, you didn't get it. If you didn't want marijuana, you didn't get that either. You lost. And I think... I feel very strongly about this as I watch national politics in particular. What's wrong with the middle of the road? I just don't get what is wrong with compromise. So we didn't get any retail zoning tonight because for some counselors, the only thing that's going to work for them is everything. It's beyond me. So that's my first comment. Now my positive comments. I want to thank the members of Planning Development Committee, because I think you guys put in more time on this very difficult issue than anybody else. The Planning Board, Andy Port, the city solicitor also got involved. I mean, some thanks are due for the efforts that went into this, no matter how the outcome was, so thank you from me. And my last one is I really... I waited until after Labor Day to say this, but thank you to the operators and the folks who work at the wastewater treatment facility for what I think was a fantastic summer from an odor perspective. I didn't hear one complaint, which is what we always hoped and dreamed of, and the Public Utilities Committee last session put a lot of time in. Staff did. Jamie was still the chief operator at the time, so another tip of the hat to him. Other than a handful of maybe musty days where I drove by, nothing, and I think it's a phenomenal accomplishment, and I give my credit to those that are skilled behind the wheel, that are running the thing and making it do what it's supposed to do, because it's not just equipment, so...
True. Before we break, I'm going to recognize Chief Leclair.
Tomorrow is the 70th anniversary of 9/11. A brief ceremony at the fire station on Greenleaf Street at 9:00. Would love to see you there.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?